...no centricity. And I would like to see people mix groups more than we have in this generation. There has to be a balance between assimilation and maintaining your own culture. It all goes back to a model. I don't know how far away you can get from certain stereotypes.
Amazing. And this is third-generation college graduate. Pretty astonishing. Now, this one truly touched me because there's a story here. If you could introduce this De Fostino from the Philippines, correct?
From the Philippines. He has his military cap on and he's... I think that a lot of his life is the pride of what he did during the war.
What he survived.
And what he went through.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm going to read again. He's a survivor of the baton death march during World War II and was incarcerated as a survivor of Japanese concentration camp at Kapaz Tarlock. He was imprisoned in provisional jail of Ilako Sir Vigon, fought a guerrilla war. He's been decorated and he's been admired by Bill Clinton when Clinton was President of the United States.
It's just amazing. There are so many of these stories. You've got to come down and see this exhibit. Once again, the website so people can get the information.
What is the website?
Quiet Heroes Over Eighty.
No.
No?
Over80.Berry Schaefer Photography dot com.
Okay, we'll make sure that it's on the television screen. Now, we're going to take a little break and see yet another video interview. So please, stay with us.
So have there been moments or experiences in your life that hold more significance than other times?
My folks were very poor people and so they never gave me the education I wanted. Actually, I was a registered nurse, but they couldn't afford to leave me go to college. And I looked at them and went, "Are you doing it?"
And what brought me to America?
Yes.
I came for the old, so it wasn't at all money that was after. My American dream was the dream of freedom. And my dream Islamic, the core of my Islamic belief, what created all living things programmed. And you go to the responsibility. It is this concept of freedom. To me, a human being is the being that is free. And I came to America to live in a free atmosphere.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. You know, it's always a pleasure when you find a secret gem in the midst of Los Angeles. And I thought we'd talk now with Nicollet Komanos, who is a representative of the gallery here. Can you tell me a little of the history? Because this is a unique place.
Oh, thank you. The gallery was started about 25 years ago by our director, Lydia Takashita. And it's a nonprofit. And Lydia has been the director and curator for all these years. And the mission of the gallery is to show the diversity, not only of, in terms of ethnicity, but in terms of gender, age. And we have a wide variety of artists who show here. I mean, many galleries show mid-career artists and artists who are well-established, but we also show artists who are just beginning in their career.
I see. And just based on the uniqueness of this Quiet Heroes Over Eighty, you can see that that's a very interesting perspective. And Lydia is to be congratulated for that.
Absolutely.
How long ago did you move into this building? Was it 25 years?
I think we've been here about 10 years.
Wow, outstanding.
But the gallery actually started... The first venue was in Little Tokyo.
I see. So you've moved around a little bit.
We've moved around and we still have another location.
Okay, so it's L.A. Art Corps. This is the brewery annex. And what's the other location?
The other one is Union Center.
Okay, Union Center. Now, we're going to rejoin Barbara and Barry Schaefer to talk some more about these extraordinary pictures of our Quiet Heroes Over Eighty. Now, I'm sharing with you a picture that really caught my eye of a lovely lady, Lydia Fermansky. And you were telling me about the challenges of her very small apartment.
So often, it would be so difficult to find the right setting to be able to take a good image. This one, I was almost falling off her balcony.
I understand. And Barbara, to me, she looks like she's got a lot of living in her life.
You know, Lydia, not only is she a quiet hero, but she also was a hero in her early days.
And recognized for that.
And a recognized hero. She was, she is, known as a righteous Gentile and was honored by the State of Israel. And what that means is that she helped the Jews escape persecution.
Nazi Germany.
Nazi Germany. And she has, amongst other things, one of her wonderful stories is that she harbored an eight-year-old boy in her home against her parents' wishes. She was 19 years old.
Oh, my.
And then walked him to safety through the forest, trading her jewelry for food for them until she handed him over to the Red Cross.
Remarkable. I understand this, a smaller portion of this exhibition will be at the Bridge Gallery downtown, correct?
Right, at City Hall.
Right, so from the 14th of May to June 18th. If you miss it here, you perhaps will have a chance to see it there. But again, thank you for being here with us today on Aging in L.A. And this is worth a trip because it's not just the words and the images. It'll make you think. These are our fellow citizens. Anyway, thank you for joining us and again, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti and I'm proud to represent Hollywood on the Los Angeles City Council. There are so many interesting things to see here. And today, we'll show you two Hollywood landmarks. So let's go on location now.
And catch a show at the El Capitan Theater. A landmark on Hollywood Boulevard since 1926. The El Capitan Theater boasts a rich history in theater and film, including being the venue for Orson Welles's Citizen Kane premiere in 1942. Today, the theater is operated by the Walt Disney Company and premieres many of Disney's new releases. The theater is also one of the most lavish and on special occasions, some movies are preceded by a live stage show. Afterward, you can have a sundae in the old-fashioned ice cream parlor next door. Go online for showtimes and more information. After you've seen the El Capitan Theater, check out another nearby Hollywood locale. Jimmy Kimmel tapes his late-night talk show right next door to the El Capitan. His show, ABC's Jimmy Kimmel Live, launched in 2001 and attracts entertainment's hottest talents. Musical guests give live concerts on an outdoor stage behind the historic Masonic Lodge studio. Shows are typically taped Monday through Friday at 6:00 P.M. You can get free tickets by going online. You have to be at least 18 years old to see a taping and at least 16 years old to see a mini-concert on the outdoor stage. It's all right here in Hollywood, so bring your family and check it out today.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Wesson to begin our meeting. So, Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Wesson.
Mr. Reyes just walked in.
Oh, okay. So, we do have Mr. Reyes. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll. If I can ask folks, sorry, Mr. Clerk. If I can ask folks to begin to wind down their conversations. Shh. We're going to bring the meeting to order. And, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardinals, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Kokory, and Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Next order of business?
Those are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval? Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Kokory in seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Before we go to the agenda, I would like to, if I could have everyone's attention, Los Angeles, as we know, is the Spanish for the angels. And we are the City of Angels. We do have a twin sister city in many ways. In Thailand, Bangkok is also the City of Angels. And we have a delegation of Thai government officials and elected officials who are with us here today in our front row. Los Angeles is home to the largest population of Thais living outside of Thailand. And, of course, Thai Town in the heart of Hollywood is the first significant so-named neighborhood anywhere in the world. The delegation is led by Mr. Tiretat, Tioccha Ren Sopa, who is here. And I'd like to ask our great Consul General from the Thai consulate as well, and all of our delegation, to please stand, to be recognized, and to thank them as we welcome them to the City of Los Angeles. Sawadeka, sawadekrap. Thank you very much, and we hope you enjoy your stay and watching democracy in action here as well. If we can please run through the agenda, we'll go through those items first.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the salute to the flag.
Okay. If I can ask everybody, please, in council chambers, to rise. And, Mr. Reyes, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? If I can ask you, please, to stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for a public hearing. There is a request to continue Item 1 to this Friday, December 17, 2010.
Okay. Without objection, we'll continue Item Number 1. And we have cards on Item 2 and 3, so we'll call those special. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call Items 4 through 10 special? Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to make a technical amendment on Number 4. And just ask for a report back to Budget and Finance Committee for instruction Number 6 prior to implementing the hiring plan.
Okay. If there's no objection, that will be as amended. Any other special items? If not, let's go ahead and take up these Items 4 through 10. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, Items 11 through 24, items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. If there's no objection to consideration, those are before us. Colleagues, any specials on these items? Yes, Mr. Parks?
Number 14, another technical amendment. We'd ask that the report that's supplemental done by housing be attached to the council file, the December 7 report.
Okay. And otherwise, it's good to go? Or you get it? Okay. Without objection, we'll add that to Item 14. Do we have cards on any of these, Mr. Clerk?
We do, sir. Items 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 20, and 24.
Okay. We'll close the public hearings on the remainder. And 14 is amended by Mr. Parks. If we can open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay. Those are approved as well. We will now go to our general public comment for items that are not on today's agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council. Just so folks know who might be here for the first time, we aren't permitted to give long responses in public comment, and I'll give you the reason under state law, under the Brown Act. If something has not been agendized as an item on our agenda, we aren't able to engage too far because it wouldn't give the opportunity to folks who are for or against to be here on the possibility of us taking action. We can give short responses, and in that spirit, I just want to say, because I see many friends of mine from Hollywood that I want to thank for being here, that the Hollywood farmers market, which we've been working tirelessly on, is a farmers' market that can, will, and must stay in Hollywood. It is something that we believe very strongly in. I'm, uh, not only, not only do I personally spend a lot of time there, we've raised tremendous amounts of funds both through the city and personally for that and helped expand it over the years. It is vital to the lifeblood of the economy of Hollywood, and I'm confident that working together with all parties, we will be able to resolve the issue. But we very much appreciate your presence here today. We have a number of folks who are here, I know, on other items, as well as some of the parking structures. But our first speaker is actually in Van Nuys City Hall. That is Donna Perriman, and I want to wish her a very good morning. And the microphone is yours.
Okay.
Ms. Perriman, good morning.
Yeah, okay, good morning. Anyway, Miriam couldn't be here, she'll be back. I thought I'd say, um, because it's hard to say because the public won't hear the truth. Oh, yeah, I saw a picture of you, Eric Garcetti, on the Google. You're a young boy with your dad. Anyway, I want the public who's come in to talk, I need the public who come in and talk about private industry versus public service. Why focus on the middle-class employees who help pay the biggest taxes, help the economy, when you should look at the big problem? Why are we such a deficit? The CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency. You just passed Prop 22, they gave the green light for the CRA to have a blank check from the state. They will, uh, they just opened up the Dennis P. Zine Community Center. Ms. Garcetti, if you want more power of the City Council, become part of the CRA dream team. You'll have more power than being a president of the City Council or even mayor of Los Angeles. Also, we need to stop the City Council from misspending all our, on their pet projects also. They, they feel, they do what they feel is good for us. We have no say. Ernie Benardi, former councilman of 7th District, knew we needed to put a cap on the CRA. Folks, if you love taxes, higher prices, believe me, you did the right thing, passing Prop 22 and 25. Yay, yay, more taxes, less services. Yay, yay. We like taxes, we like taxes. God bless the CRA, agency that we love. Yes, you can tell that they love the CRA. They loved, if they see a mountain, they'll pave it. They'll, I mean, they'll level it. They see a prairie, they'll pave it. Yes, they'll want to, they want to be, will look like New York with big, tall buildings. We need to stop the CRA, otherwise, we'll never get rid of the deficit. Thank you. And it's good to see you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, you too, and thank you for the singing. We do have 12 members that are here, and so if you'll please indulge me for a moment, we need 12 members on a couple of the different items that are here before us. We're going to pause public comment, come right back to it. But Items, I believe, Mr. Clerk, it's 2 and 11? Are those the two that require 12 votes? Okay. Why don't we go ahead, then, on Number 2 first and take the public comments for that? We'll be coming back to general public comment. But Martha Cox and Nittikman is our first speaker, if you'd like to come forward. And Jaime Valdivia will be the second one on Item Number 2. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
Do, I believe, 2 and 3 come together?
Yes, 2 and 3 together.
Okay.
Thank you. If you'd like to come forward. Martha Cox, yes.
My name is Martha Cox Nittikman. I'm with the Building Owners and Managers Association. We represent over 350 commercial office building owners in Los Angeles, and about half of those are in the City of L.A. I'm here testifying in support of the adoption of the L.A. Green Building Code. As a statewide organization, BOMA worked closely with California Building Standards Commission to ensure that the CalGreen code promoted green buildings will not overly burdening the construction process. The L.A. Department of Building and Safety took this to the next level by seamlessly integrating the green components of construction into the current plan check and inspection process. Additionally, the new L.A. Code covers some aspects of construction in existing buildings which the state law did not. These provisions, while clearly enhancing the green quality of existing buildings, are not burdensome and, in fact, are an extension of what many building owners are already incorporating in their tenant improvement projects. We've had the opportunity to work very closely with Osama Yunan of LADBS, and we applaud him for his collaborative approach to the development of this ordinance. We therefore urge the adoption of the Green Building Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be taking 2 and 3 together. Jaime? Valdivia?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everybody.
You too.
I'm the committee here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here. I'm representing the Southern California Pipe Trades here. And basically, we are here to go on record in support of the adoption of the CalGreen here because of the fact that absolutely sustainability, taking care of our environment, is something we definitely need to do. This is a standard. We have a bar to follow here now. And it's, uh, it's a pleasure to stand here before you to say that we absolutely, wholeheartedly stand right behind this with Osama, is doing great presentations, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate your work on this issue. David Otterstein is our next speaker. After that will be Sandy Sanchez.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In a collaborative effort over the past few years, Los Angeles has adopted several ordinances that mandate, incentivize, and facilitate green building. The state has required all municipalities to comply with the California Green Building Standards Code, known as CalGreen, by January 1, 2011. The piping industry, progress, and education stands before you today to support the ordinance presented by the L.A. Department of Building and Safety, known as the L.A. Green Code, which will be effective January 1, if approved, 2011, which complies with the state mandated deadline. The ordinance will not diminish any efforts, progress, or requirements achieved over the past few years. This ordinance will continue the quest for greening Los Angeles. The ordinance establishes a streamlined process for one green building standard code, creating predictability for applicants, and uniformity in compliance by the Department of Building and Safety. This ordinance is the ribbon that ties together the package for continuing greening Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Sandy Sanchez, and thank you again to our Thai visitors. We appreciate you very much. Have a good stay and a good visit to Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sandy Sanchez with the Building Industry Association. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. We wanted to say thank you to the staff and Osama for working with us to establish this code. The BIA would like to express support for CalGreen and recommends that City Council adopt CalGreen, L.A. Green Code, as well as sunset the existing green ordinances and replace it with this more cohesive code to avoid any duplicate potential conflicts and requirements in the existing city's code. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Michael Kiroz is our next speaker, who I know was here if there were questions, but why don't you take the opportunity and speak as well? Ann Williams will follow. We're taking Numbers 2 and 3 together since they're interrelated as well, and so Ann Williams is next. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable President and Council. Michael Kiroz representing the Laborers International Union of North America and Pacific Southwest Laborers and Local 300. We're here today to, to express our support for CalGreen. We have worked diligently at a state level for the last two and a half years with the folks up at the Building Standards Commission. We're also here to, to express our sincere appreciation to Los Angeles Building and Safety for the diligence and work that they've put into the development of this ordinance. We have had some discussions over the past few months since this time last year when council received language subject to construction waste and diversion for demolition and new construction projects. The discussion has been relative to either or choice of either onsite diversion and/or offsite diversion. The ordinance as it stands, although it was implied, contains only language that relates to offsite diversion. We, we ask now that council would, would look at the opportunity to send back to, to staff the option of having onsite diversion for the contractors. We believe that it'd be a cost benefit to the contractors and give them an opportunity to be able to develop their own onsite programs as opposed to having to deal with one bolt diversion program that would be a lot more costly and a little less ineffective for our contractors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate your work on the issue as well. Ann Williams is next, and then Greg Wrights.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. We're pleased to be here today to support the Department of Building and Safety in their efforts to implement the local ordinance for CalGreen. Implementing CalGreen and having a uniform mandatory code for all buildings will lead to more consistency and predictability and is a step in the right direction toward reforming our development process. We do understand that this move requires difficult personnel decisions. However, this is a brand-new system for both public and private sectors, which will require specialized training and expertise. And the last thing that we need is to have inspectors out in the field further delaying projects because of their inexperience and lack of knowledge. You may be surprised to see CCA here in support of more fees being placed on the development community, but we have confidence in the Department of Building and Safety and their ability to continue doing the good work they do in the most efficient manner possible, and we believe that they need these new positions. We hope we have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Wrights is our next speaker, and Matt Dowd will follow.
Good morning. My name is Greg Wrights. I'm with Rethink Development. We're a green real estate developer, and we do develop in the City of Los Angeles. I want to speak in support of this item. The outreach that Osama Yunan and Building and Safety engaged in was exemplary and reached out to various different stakeholders. I think the result is great, and it's much improved over the California statewide CalGreen Code. I believe it will, in fact, be the example for the state to follow in the future. I do want to encourage the City Council to continue to incentivize those that are leaders in green building above and beyond this CalGreen Code, but I think this is great for all and a predictable code for everyone to follow within the city. So, I support it wholly, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg Wrights. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Zuma.
Yes, thank you, Matt Dowd. Nice to be back, Channel 35, City Council, Christmas time. Good, we've got a nice, warm, fuzzy item on the agenda, but I feel that that's all it is. Because, you know, the people here in support of this are most likely going to benefit from it in some way commercially. See, this is just another code I feel that the city can use to violate buildings and keep all these programs in motion, like the REAP program. And then, I see on the agenda, there's something about inspection fees now for Housing Department to come and inspect these violations. So, we're opening up a whole new range of things that you need to comply with that are green. I mean, you know, like, the City of L.A. has got bigger problems than greening itself for looks. That's all it is. It's, it's looks. Nobody really cares that much because they're, they're broke, and it's Christmas time, and they're out of their job, and you fired everyone in the city. So, these are warm and fuzzy things, and they talk about this, and the Obama government should look into it. That's where the corruption starts, with nonprofits and warm and fuzzy things that it sounds great, as the children, oh, let's green everything, and let's give hundreds of millions of dollars. And all these people who green buildings, well, of course, they're in favor of it, but someone has to be against it, and that's where I come in. And the city's ordinances, they've had a trifecta of losses in federal court with Superman, and then with the medical marijuana in Venice Beach. They're not to be trusted with these things, so I say no, and I'll take two minutes. Thank you, Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker. After that will be Rick Nightengale in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Dogg.
Yes, good morning. For the people that will be collecting fees, not for the constituents or property owners or building owners. Again, another bamboozle. First of all, let's read off of the ordinance. Assessing a Fee. Mandatory Measures. Establish a Green Building Division. Let's just, you know, let's just drive anybody that could ever think of coming to this city right out of the city. Now, first of all, the mayor has this idea that we got to be the greatest big city in America. Yet, he's got these projections. He pulled them out of his own hot air. There's no statistics to get behind his 20% or 40% or whatever. You can't afford to do this. The people can't afford it. And if I can have a little bit of quiet in the chambers today, and also, I'd like to say that, um, I'm just reading out of this. I don't even, I don't even know what to say except for the fact that you need to get off of this green kick because nobody can afford it. It's a big scam to try to pilfer and shake down as much as you can for people with air rights or anything. You got a bad history of losing for getting sued for things. Why don't you just tell people that they have to drive only green cars, and then make them pay a fee for green cars? And then say, "We're going to set up a division to enforce and inspect for green cars." This is crazy. You overreach and overstep your boundaries time after time. Look what happened at Venice Beach. Look what happened with the Hollywood superheroes. Look what happened with medical marijuana. It's a trifecta of loser-ness, and I'm here to say it's going to be getting much worse. So, don't overreach anymore. Make your New Year's resolution for 2011 that you're not going to overreach anymore. And, and I'd like to remind you--
Mr. Dogg, if you could bring it back to the ordinances that are before us, the CalGreen ordinances?
The ordinances are shady. How do I know it's shady? Because it's on the agenda. You are racketeering, shakedown factory. Many of you will be in prison, and you're getting sued up the wazoo. This is going to be something else. And protect the city's general fund. Quit doing things to get you sued.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that will be Will Wright here in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, good morning. I'll tell you, I don't know how many of you people have been in construction and so forth and really, and really had real jobs out there, but the City of Los Angeles is the most expensive place to build at. I don't know if you people realize it, but yeah, since the earthquake, I mean, I believe in having safe buildings. Don't get me wrong, I've been in construction. And, but this place has just gone so overboard that it's just unbelievable that all the, the things that you want to do to build a house or any other construction, now it's going into green, and it's going to cost a lot more to do. And then you're making it mandatory. That, where's the freedom of certain things? That if you want to go green, fine, but then you start putting it in all these rules. I mean, it was supposed to be a kind of a free country, you know? That, yeah, you can do this, and you can do that. And, I mean, really, the City of Los Angeles just starts it all, and granted, it snowballs, and it's just unbelievable. Like, like these other foreign countries and all that with all these tragedies that are happening, and their buildings are just falling down. Yeah, they need something to turn around and help them get a code of some type. But this place has gone so overboard of building something, it's outrageous to what it costs to turn around and do something. Between the inspection fees and the permit fees, and then to turn around and what, what you want to, how to build it, it's crazy. And now you're turning around and want this green, and the prices are so sky-high to even try to do it. I've tried to get solar, and it's just outrageous amount of money that it's going to cost, even with the breaks, to turn around, that the DWP and so forth will give you. That, I mean, it has to stop. I mean, don't you people have anything to do with the problems of the City of Los Angeles?
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. Just a polite reminder, we do have to talk about the issue that is before us right now, which is the Cal Building Ordinance under state law. That's under the Brown Act, which we should be talking about. Will Wright is our next speaker. After that is Michelle Greckin.
Good morning. My name is Will Wright. I work for the American Institute of Architects, and I want to recognize the exemplary work of Osama Yunan in this case. We are in support of this proposal. To remind everyone, CalGreen is a state mandatory law. We currently already have the Green Building Ordinance on the books, so this is just enabling us to have one consistent law as opposed to two conflicting laws. We really should take a moment, though, in this context, to see when the civic process is working quite well. He's engaged, you know, with the leadership of Bud Overham, engaged the entire community of Los Angeles to help craft this ordinance and opened it up for about six months in that process. It was, it was something that we're proud of, and this is the way the city is supposed to work, and we want to take a moment to, to really pay attention to that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Michelle Greckin is our next speaker.
So, we are from Los Angeles Business Council. We're here speaking on behalf of Item Number 2, the CalGreen Building Ordinance Implementation and the major amendments that are being implemented or suggested. So, per my remarks, LABC is in strong support of green building practices in the City of L.A., and we have demonstrated this in a number of ways. In 2007, 2008, we work with the mayor's office, City Council, several stakeholders in implementing the private sector green building ordinance, which was a success and passed unanimously through council. But as it has it now, there's a mandatory state building code coming online, and we do support that for new buildings moving into 2011. However, at this time, we encourage that the proposed local amendments be aligned with those outlined in the previous private sector green building ordinance. We hope that these issues, such as bringing current recommendations down to 10% above Title 24, and limiting the amount of new AC outlet allotments be revised in the cleanup ordinance following in the new year. And those are our recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that is the end of our speaker cards. Mr. Reyes is first in the queue, then Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call up the city representatives have worked very hard on this issue. I'd like to call up our Building and Safety, Osama Yunan, David Law, Kim Westhoff from the City Attorney's Office, if you're here. Tom Rothman and Deborah Kane from Planning, come on up. As it coming up, colleagues, this is one of those efforts in which we're trying to make it easier to work in Los Angeles. Not easier, not only easier, but also more effective when it comes to building green, to being able to adopt green policies that effectuate how our built environment can perform in the future. Currently, the state has one set of rules and laws in its approach. The city adopted its lead-based efforts back in 2008. So, what this is, is to combine both so that when an inspector is out on the field, working with those who are doing their best to improve our city, that it is simplified, they're reading from the same page, and they understand exactly what is being asked of them, and the interpretation is clear in how they look at the projects that are before them. So, this is an effort that collapses, these two, as the former speakers have alluded to. And I want to thank Building and Safety for their hard work. This actually begins back in 2008, working with Councilman Perry in Councilman Garcetti's office. As we evolved this past year, Councilman Garcetti's office, my office, the mayor's office, we've been trying to make sure that we're creating that focal point that simplifies the process. And thanks to our staff, City Attorney, Planning, and Building and Safety. Plank, you can come to the table. Come on, Tom. Let me shy. Are you ready for the hard questions, Tom? Okay. So, it's important that this ordinance, as well as the CA report, is accepted today, that we actually vote on this. It has gathered input, the city has gathered input from a range of stakeholders, and this ordinance has the support of those in the green building community who have worked with us over the years, as well as many other stakeholders, including the industry and individual homeowners. So, this is benefiting the whole range of stakeholders that are working with the built environment. The state has adopted a CalGreen Code, which will become mandatory on January 1, two weeks from now, which is why we have this urgency clause. The city has a green building ordinance that we developed, and essentially, this collapses the two into one. So, this is the reason why we want to make this vote happen today. Want to thank our colleagues here, the 12 that are allowing us to get to this point. And I would urge an I-vote. We can move this item forthwith, and we would move all three committee reports, budget, finance, first on Plum. And again, thank you for your support. Any, I'm here for any questions you might have.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to our planning department, to Building and Safety, Osama Yunan, David Law, everybody who's been making the rounds and been doing a great job with this. And I'll be brief, because I know we have folks waiting also in public comment. We, two Earth days ago, passed the most wide-reaching green building ordinance in the country. Los Angeles can be very proud of what it did to make sure that we, the largest consumer of electricity and of water in the country, is when we are in our own buildings, our homes and in our businesses. And it was a great coming together where first people were fearful, you know, will the business community be on board? Will the environmental community think it goes far enough? And we actually came together to embrace this, not only because it was the right thing to do for our environment, but because it also creates green jobs right here in our local economy. We did that because California couldn't do it as quickly and as nimbly, but we hope that the state would. In fact, all of us, I think, hope that one day we won't call things environmental because it's just the way we do business. When we stop being green, it's because we're so green, it's just normal. It's the normal, and it's not something exceptional. And I think that's our goal. The California code that did move forward was great and took the next step forward. In getting these two together, though, we're going to be looking at, just so the general public knows what we're talking about, electric vehicles for homes, when we build them out, to be able to have charging stations, making sure that we pre-wire rooftops and other places for solar panels, that we do 15 percent better with our ordinance than what's required under Cal Green even on energy conservation. And the biggest bang for the buck is just if we all conserve more. When you look at the amount of dollars you put into generating new green electricity, that's nice, but we can all do things in our homes and our businesses today that actually conserve more. And we always brag about what we've done here with water, but between the early 80s and now, we've added more than a million people to the city of Los Angeles, and we consume the same amount of water as we did back then because of low faucets and low-flush toilets. Those are the sorts of things we can do to continue to live sustainably. This has brought together an amazing coalition of folks, labor, the environmental community, and the business community. All came here and testified, "Please do this and do it now." And that, I think, reflects the bureaucracy and the policymaking folks that have understood that we have to be able to go green in the most intimate ways that we live and in the most dramatic ways that we build this city out in the future. I want to thank Mr. Reyes for partnering on this so well. He's an extraordinary chair of our Plum Committee and an environmentalist who has understood this. I know there are some who might want to look at delaying this, but I want to underscore, I know Mr. Alarcon is speaking next, and there's been some questions. People have done the rounds. If we do not pass this today with a 12-person unanimous vote, here's the practical effect of that, which is not to say we can't tweak this in the future. The practical effect is we will have two different building codes. I think the environmental community, I think labor, and I know for sure business, will not like that, and it kind of underscores, if we do that, we prove ourselves to be that LA that isn't business-friendly, that isn't community-friendly, that can't get things done, that isn't environmental-friendly. So we need to pass this today on unanimous vote with the 12 members that we have, or else we risk that all going away. And finally, some of the details that are in here, and I want to thank the laborers, International, who's worked a lot on this too, and we had a great meeting, and we're going to get a report back on some of this. But one of the things that this also does is it has certified green jobs for laborers who will now take polluted infill, the actual dirt that we move, and clean that on-site so that we don't just truck that off to someplace and put it in a dump where we don't have any space in our landfills, but will also create commissioned workers that the city will certify, that will go in there and clean up on-site, which will be good for the environment, which will be predictable for business, and which I think is a great model that other cities are already calling us about. How can we do that as well? Santa Monica was too scared to do it. It's rare that Los Angeles gets to do something before Santa Monica. So let's show our friends to the West that we can sometimes be even more environmental more quickly in a way that has that business and labor buy-off as well. So I urge your unanimous support and passage of this today. And thank you again, Mr. Reyes, and thank you to all the advocates who have worked so hard on this. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I think all of us want to go green. I think my track record of voting has demonstrated my strength in these matters, and particularly my efforts to close Lopez Canyon landfill. I mean, the whole point of that was to force us to divert our trash to more effective processes and force us to be more conscientious about how we're managing our trash system. And while this will bring us in compliance with the law, I want to make it very clear, it is not the best way to do this by providing the builders an option as to whether or not they want to source-separate it or whether they're going to truck it to a MRF. So by allowing them that option, it is not going to reduce the truck traffic to the MRFs, and it's not going to reduce the activity at the MRF, and it's not going to improve the quality of the separation, which is best done at the site. What I would have rather seen was an ordinance that delineated exceptions, exemptions to the provisions to allow, under strict circumstances, for example, there's no capacity at the site to do the separation, there's no exemption for that. Everybody, a large site that has plenty of capacity to do the source separation could take it to a MRF. It provides the option. And so I think this, in some respects, could be driven by cost, and the builders will choose the cheapest way to do it, which may be sending it to a MRF, which is not the best thing, which is not moving, and it's not even the intent of the law. The intent of the law was to increase diversion to the maximum possible. This is not the maximum possible. We have time constraints. We have to do this before January 1st. But I would like to propose that we come back with something better after. We can't do it right now because of the time constraints. So, and what I think we need, and this is, I just heard about this late last week, like Friday, and I'm trying to do the best I can in the last five days, what we need to do is define those exemptions, when it is permissible for a construction site to send it to a MRF. And I don't know, are there extreme exemptions that might have to go directly to a landfill? I don't think so. It has to go to a MRF, right?
Councilman, I think you're raising some very valid and important points. I strongly feel that if we could fold them in, as you were suggesting, let's meet our deadline, let's make it easier and more efficient for not only the city, family, but for the community, and let's fold in your concerns, and let's break that down, and we can come back after the 1st of the year and look at how we can fold that into the ordinance. So that way, we can address the concerns. We give you more time, and we can ask the different stakeholders, the property owners, the industry, the unions, how we can look at the weaknesses that you are right now--
Okay, so what I would like to propose is an amendment to have the departments report back to the council on ways to find the best practices possible, to encourage the best practices as possible under the provisions of this ordinance, recognizing that we have to meet the statutory mandate to get this done by the 1st, but come back to provide specific exemptions, to make the law require source separation with exemptions. And we need to delineate what those exemptions would be, because I certainly can't think of all of them, and I'm sure the departments, I've been just talking to Building and Safety and Sanitation, they both have ideas on what those exemptions might be. So I would offer that as a friendly amendment.
I will second that, Mr. Alarcon. You took the words out of my mouth of what I was going to conclude with, but absolutely I can second it.
Could we, could you, how long would it take to get that back? Could we get it as soon as possible?
I think we can have it in January. We've been talking to folks about this as well. And I think you should make it stronger, that it would require, it's language to be able to pass something that require that on-site, which is what I think you're talking about as well. So if we can put that, and we'll look at bringing back language in January, and, you know, if you can talk to business community, others support that as well, this will allow it to move forward, but we can accomplish what I know we both share as the goal there.
Great. Then the amendment would be for a 30-day report back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Cardenas.
It's my understanding that also on Friday's council agenda, we have another component of this that's coming forth. What would that be? How would you describe that?
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. My name is Osama Yunan with Building and Safety. Bureau of Sanitation will be coming forth on Friday to talk about the LA City Waste Diversion Program, which they are updating to meet the state code. And that will be the discussion on Friday.
And what is the relevancy to the item before us right now and will be here on Friday? What's the connection?
In the green code, to make sure that all city codes are consistent, we put in there that for the waste diversion, it shall comply with the LA municipal code, and that municipal code is what's coming to you on Friday. So whatever happens Friday would be reflected automatically into this green code.
Okay, so basically, councilmembers, we also have an opportunity, because that was my understanding, my office has been working on language to appropriately amend this along the lines also of what Councilmember Alarcon was just speaking to right now. And the fact of the matter is, we have between now and Friday as well to hopefully get some appropriate language so that it's clearer as to the responsibilities and the flexibilities of how this is going to be brought about in the city of Los Angeles. So, because there was a little bit of confusion going on here for some of us who are actually focusing on Friday's agenda, and I think that there might have been a little mix-up and a little concern that perhaps today was the day that we needed to take a bite at the apple. We could do something today, I'm sure, but we still have Friday to also effectuate this particular item as well. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, the beauty of this process is that we get to hear different perspectives. We go through our working committee. We hope to reach and hash out many of these issues, but at times, we come to this place, we realize there could be other adjustments, other perspectives to be heard. I think what you're hearing from all the different parties, a willingness to bring forth these amendments, but the critical juncture now is to put something in the books before January 1st. And that, to me, is the milestone that needs to be achieved so that we can be as flexible afterwards with amendments. I know there's strong due diligence that has been performed by our staff, by stakeholders, and we can achieve these goals. So I ask for an I-vote, and we can move all three committee reports. Truly appreciate that, and make this city healthier. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. There are no further speakers in the queue. If there are no questions or comments, then let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Then tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you very much. Our next item, we'll take this out of order because we still have 12 people here, is item number 11, please. Yes, we have some cards. We have some speaker cards. Why don't, Mr. Clerk, why don't you read the item into the record, and then I'll call the speaker cards up on this item?
Very good. That would bring us to item number 11, which is an exemption and communication from the city attorney and ordinance first consideration relative to amending the Los Angeles municipal code to extend the sunset date of the foreclosure eviction ordinance.
I'd like to call forward the following speakers. Larry Gross, Zuma Dog, Matthew Dowd, and Wayne Spindler.
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. I want to thank you, councilmembers Garcetti and Parks and Weston, for bringing this important motion forward. The foreclosure crisis and its impact on hard-working Americas is a national disgrace. It's especially unjust for the forgotten victims, tenants, and in this case, we're talking about unprotected tenants living in non-rent-controlled buildings. They've done nothing wrong, they've paid their rent on time, but suddenly, banks are evicting them due to their misfortune of living in foreclosed rental properties. Yet these are the same banks who had no problem begging Congress for billions of dollars in bailouts, bailouts that are paid for by these tenants and other taxpayers. We applaud this council and the mayor for acting decisively two years ago and providing national leadership with enacting some of the strongest tenant protections for renters in this unfortunate situation. It provides tenants a little bit of hope and justice. You extended this provision one year ago, and we support your action today to extend it for another year, and thank you very much.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, Zuma Dog is here, and I'm here to give my recommendation for happy holidays, and I say, yes, extend this for another year, because why should, you know what? What this says is to extend getting people kicked out of their homes for the foreclosure. I say absolutely, let people stay in their homes for free. And I'm being serious, because when you look at what the government does with the money, when you look at what the businesses and the banks that you pay do with the money, with their billions of bonuses and the way they lose it and the way they screw you every time, let the people stay in their homes for free. Because the government wastes the money, the banks they pay waste the money, and they screw you every step of the way. So let people stay in their homes for free until we have a revolution that sorts out this entire government from federal, state, and local. Anarchy rules, let people stay in their homes. And you know what? You better get your stuff together, because you've got a real crisis on your hands now, and you really blew it after four and a half years. I'm pissed.
Matthew Dowd. And to close, Wayne Spindler.
All right, let me moderate it down a little after that. First of all, I want you to take the address and phone number off the speaker cards, too, because you're fooling people into giving that information. It's really not required. I think it's an intrusion of privacy. Let me talk about this item, though. See, we've been here for nearly five years, and that takes us back to early 2006, because we're almost in 2011. So Christmas is coming up, people getting kicked out of their homes, but we warned you about this kind of thing so long ago, and that's what I want to point out, is that the people on this side of the rope hear things from people that they're connected to that you may not be connected to, but you choose to ignore public comment even, and it turns out to come back and bite you so many times, and I'm one of them. The injunction on Venice Beach, they knocked that out. So this is what I'm here to say. When these things come up and people jump up on public comment and say there's going to be a housing crisis or a foreclosure and a subprime meltdown, and you know the guy from East LA, I won't even say his name, because I can't remember, it's Jose, that's it, Jose. So now we're in this place where we have to make, this is like Band-Aid on a gaping wound, but unfortunately, that's what we have to deal with now, because that's where we're at. So looking forward, I'm going to support this as future councilmember Dowd, I'll give it the approval, and I say, push it forward. Eric Garcetti, happy holidays, too. I'm looking forward to settling everything.
Mr. Wayne Spindler.
Here's another example of the council not doing what it's supposed to be doing. The city's bankrupt, and you're allowing people to stay in bankrupt homes that don't belong there, and you want to extend it. Let this die. These properties have to go on the market as soon as possible, they have to get new owners, and those new owners will be replacing people that are in there with people who pay the property taxes, because when a property is in a foreclosure situation, the county has five years until it can take the property for unpaid taxes. Every year that is delayed is tens of thousands of dollars potentially on each property that the county, the city, and all of the revenue loses. Ultimately, the property values are going to continue to go down for another couple of years. You're allowing squatters and anybody to stay in these properties. In fact, a lot of these properties, somebody comes in that has no relationship to the property, it's vacant, they take it over, they rent it to somebody, they collect the rents. You-- Your statute has the indirect consequence of allowing those people to stay that aren't even associated with the property. Other counties all over the country are dealing with this problem. These banks need to dispose of these assets. They have several years' worth of inventory, and that inventory is, if it comes on the market at one time, there's going to be a crush. You're not allowing the process of people getting back in those homes, that can afford those homes, and start contributing to the communities. This is leading to more blight. So the county, the city, needs to get out of all of this ancillary business and focus on the budget. Let this go, pay attention, pass a budget, and get out of the private sector and start getting things in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go to Van Nuys for Rick Nightengale.
Yes, good morning. You know, I really feel sorry for these people that are in the foreclosure situation. It's really terrible, but the same thing happened back in the '70s, that the housing market just went crazy. I was lucky enough to get on the very bottom of it, and I got to buy my first house then. But you can't expect to somebody's that you knew this was going to happen. I knew it two, three years ago. There was no way that this possibly could happen without spending, when you're spending two-thirds of your salary to buy a house, that you couldn't even put food on your table for your children and so forth. And now you want the public to turn around and basically feel sorry for you, because you lost your house, that you can't afford it, that you knew that you couldn't, but it was an investment. They all come say, oh, it's going to go, prices are going to go higher and higher, you'll be able to sell it and make money. It was all about making the money to a lot of the people that are crying the blues today. And I'm sorry to have that happen, but like the gentleman just before me, that the banks have responsibilities, and the state is bankrupt, the city is bankrupt, and it has to follow the course that these houses get on the market. There are people to buy houses that are in the market looking, that have some money saved, or their families are helping them to buy a house. But you have to go with the program. You've got your fingers and too many pies. And I feel sorry for these people, but you have no right to pass this ordinance to turn around and have this happen. Because it just don't concern you. You don't have the money part of it, like the banks, and everybody here that has a bank account, it's coming out of their money, because it just goes on and on and on like a snowball going down a hill. And it has to stop, but if you don't let the process stop, it's not going to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. And I will be very brief. Mr. Parks has stayed here so that we get 12 members, but it's fitting he's here, because he co-authored this, and it was in his district that we first found this out. There is a lot of misunderstanding from some of the public comment about what this does, so I'll summarize it very briefly. To Johnny Lee, who lived in Echo Park in my district, to a wonderful mother and daughter who lived in Mr. Parks's district, this is not about protecting a squatter or somebody who doesn't pay rent. This is the truly innocent victims of the foreclosure crisis. When a building, a home that is being rented, or an apartment that is being rented, goes into foreclosure, it's not out there on the market, it's already picked up by the bank. The banks were then evicting people who always paid their rent on time, who have paid every fee, who still can be kicked out if they break any of the normal rules of tenancy, but for whatever reason, it was having a twofold effect on our communities. The banks were kicking people out till they became vacant properties that attracted crime and broken windows and grime. And secondly, people who paid their rent every single month were being illegally evicted. This was the first-in-nation way to stop that. Cities have copied it now in over 100 cities. And Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae took inspiration from the L.A. Ordinance and made this policy for anything that they took over in the foreclosure crisis. There is no reason that anybody who is a good-paying tenant, who's renting a home or renting an apartment in the city of Los Angeles in the midst of banks' malfeasance and other people's malfeasance, who bought houses and apartments they couldn't afford or that foreclosed on them, should have to lose their home when they pay their rent track on time and play by the rules, and it's others who broke it. This extends it for another year, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. No further speakers in the queue. Would you please open the roll on this item, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, thank you very much. That was item number 11, and I believe those are... Okay, great. And just so that everyone knows, all items heard today will go forth with, that's forth with, so you won't have to call them yourselves. We will now go through public comment, and we will start with public comment on P3. And I'm going to call up, actually, there's only four or five cards, Laura Lake, Stephen Resnick, Toni Gray. Is Stephen Resnick here? Okay, Stephen, why don't you come on up too? Stephen Resnick and Toni Gray, is Toni Gray here? Toni?
She's out of the room.
She's out of the room?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll put her, Sandy Brown. Okay, Laura. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, council members. I'm here on behalf of communities across the city, nine communities that have been impacted by the P3 proposal, and I ask you to, after two years of playing with this concept, to engage in a dialogue with the impacted communities and reach out and get some alternatives. Because this is a Faustian bargain to sacrifice small business across the city and big business and the real estate industry for an eight-month reprieve. And what do you do then? You lease the parking meters. That's next. We need to do a better job. Consider each garage an ATM machine that's putting out money year-round. You don't sell an ATM machine for eight months cash out when it can be there for 50 years providing cash to the city. You could raise monthly rates. They're not at market rate. There are many things you can do to improve operations. You could collect the parking lot tax better. The number-one scoff law in this city is a parking lot operator who owes this city $2 million. We'd like to work with you, but we have to tell you that what you're going to see this morning is the tip of the iceberg, and the tom-toms are beating. We'd really rather work with you than against you. We have not engaged legal counsel yet, but if this doesn't get resolved pretty fast, we will be forced to do that. We want the city to work for everyone. Main Street needs its support now.
Stephen Resnick?
Good morning, everyone. Stephen Resnick, president of the Westwood Homeowners Association, representing 3,000 homeowners, and I'm also secretary of the Westwood Neighborhood Council. I'm also asking you this morning to please save the Broxton Garage, the only public parking in Westwood Village. I have 500 petitions here, and there are, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, there are thousands more online and coming in as we speak to save the garage. This is the lifeblood of the city, of Westwood Village, and it will devastate the village if it goes away to lease. In a meeting with Andre Alarcon from Board of Public Works, we were steps from the garage on another subject, just trying to help the village, and I watched as cars streamed in on a weekday afternoon to this garage. When it goes away to lease, those cars won't come, the businesses will cease to exist, and it'll just devastate Westwood. Please save the garage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandy Brown?
Toni's here. I'm sorry, I'm the head of Sandy Brown, Toni Gray.
Okay, you were out of the room when I called you.
I know, I knew as soon as I went out to the restroom that would happen.
Okay, great. All right, Toni Gray, then Sandy Brown.
Right, thank you very much. My name's Toni Gray, and I'm the vice president of the newly-elected Westwood Neighborhood Council. The first item on our first agenda was the parking garage in Westwood. There was unanimous vote to support maintaining the free parking in the Broxton Garage as part of our revitalization effort. In Westwood, those of you who are aware of Westwood, that we have a lot of empty businesses in Westwood, those jobs that you're trying to save in the city will be lost jobs for us in Westwood. We had a unanimous vote by the council. We have submitted it to the C.I.S. Our community impact statement has been submitted to the city clerk, and you'll be seeing it. I would also like to say that we also have an additional 2,000 petition signatures, since we were notified that this may be on the agenda today. We're not going away. We have a lot more petitions to come, and it has just begun, and many of our business people could not be here due to the holiday season. But I know there are a number of people here in the crowd who are supporting the fact that we do not want to lose our city garages, and I'd like for those people to stand up and show that you're here. Thank you very much. We'll be waiting for it to be an agenda item, and I am very sorry that our Councilman Corretts is not here. He was here there for our first meeting Westwood Neighborhood Council. We're sorry he's not here to hear this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
And just as a point of information, he was unexpectedly sick today. He was expected to be here, but he's home recovering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBonge?
I just wanted to add, too, Mr. Corretts is under the weather.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Sandy Brown?
We wish him well. Sandy Brown, I'm president of the Homie Westwood Property Owners Association. We're 1,100 single-family homes who oppose the leasing of the Broxton Garage and all garages in the city. The L.A. Times, the Business Journal, and the Daily Bruin all wrote editorials opposing this as well. On our way downtown today, we came over Santa Monica Boulevard. There was a beautiful holiday display on Santa Monica at Cannon Drive that said, "You can on cannon." As I drove by that, I thought, well, you won't in Westwood if we lose this garage. This is really instrumental to keeping Westwood at least on the map until we can get some people in there to lease the stores, and in the meantime, those stores that are there now use these garages, the doctors and offices in the village use these for short-term parking and as well for long-term parking. So we will ask you again to please reconsider this. Don't move forward so fast on this. We'd love to work with you, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And there's a gentleman behind me, by the way, who signed up for general comments, and he would like to speak to this issue.
We will call based upon the cards. Wolfgang Seeth?
Vith.
Wolfgang Vith? Wolfgang, you here?
Who's this?
Okay, Wolfgang, thank you.
I don't know. Wolfgang Feit, I'm the founder of the Northwest Wood Village Residents Association. That's a community part of Westwood, next to the Westwood Village. We have about 15,000 people living there, mostly renters. I'm a renter, and I like to shop in Westwood, which is made possible because of the Westwood Garage providing two-hour free parking like surrounding communities, Santa Monica and Beverly Hills. It is very essential to have that, because otherwise, you look for a place outside of Westwood in order to park your car and then browse the stores, which is essential, the browsing of the stores. If you have a direct deal with a store, you may as well pay it, but if you don't have that, that's the way it goes. So I think it is almost suicidal for the city to give away this parking garage, and on top of it, what makes the situation worse is, the city is then prohibited for 50 years to provide another facility in Westwood with two-hour free parking. So everybody in Westwood basically has to go to Santa Monica or Beverly Hills to do their shopping, and Westwood is going to falter away. It's getting worse. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Gallo Medina. So what is your name?
Gallo.
No, the gentleman...
I'm sorry. Are you next?
My name's Ronald Ziff. I wanted to speak on P3, but I wrote down general. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I'll find your card. Ronald Ziff? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Gallo Medina. I'm a native of Hollywood, born and raised. I'm a property owner. I own commercial property on Hollywood Boulevard. As a financial advisor by trade, I know when the economy tumbles, when it stumbles. It's easy to reach for a brass ring, but like any transaction, we always have to do what's called due diligence. This parking structure requires that. The ramifications for Hollywood can be quite devastating from tourists, all the way through tax revenue. I understand cash flow is in the red now, but sometimes, we do have to just simply slow down and make sure that all decisions do have their homework done. Thank you very much. Have a terrific Christmas. Good holiday.
Mr. Ziff, I cannot find your card. Did you fill out a speaker card?
Yes, I did. I gave it to the officer over here.
Okay, let me see if I can locate it, but go ahead. Why don't you speak now, and then if I need for you to fill out a card for the record, I'll let you know.
Be happy to...
And Jack, and I saw your names, I saw your hands go up. I'll call on you next. Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Ronald Ziff. I'm the land use chairman of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, and I've spent more than 60 years in the retail business. One of my duties was to teach store managers how to avoid taking bad checks, and that's what I want to do today, teach you how to keep from taking a bad check in less than two minutes. A check is a promise to pay. A bad check is a promise that will not be kept. Before it's been refused by a bank, the only difference between the two is the person who wrote that check. A person who writes bad checks does it over and over again, and all you have to do not to take that check is to say no. The Los Angeles parking lot industry is filled with people who have given our city bad checks over and over again. The little secret in Los Angeles is that you can collect 10% tax on parking and not remit it to the city. The City Controller's Office and the Office of Finance list a number of major parking lot operators, Premier Parking, Sunshine Auto Park, Superior Valet, and many others that just don't, they collect the tax and they don't pass it on. Prestige Parking collected over $20 million in taxes over a five-year period. When the city finally prosecuted him, the money was gone. And then he spent six months in jail at your expense. The city tax right now is remitted on what the finance office calls a voluntary system. I urge you to collect the taxes instead of selling our parking lots to these operators.
Thank you very much. And I did find your card in the other pile. Jack Humphreaville, I do have your card, so why don't you come up next? And there was a lady over here. What is your name, ma'am?
Roxanne Stern.
Roxanne Stewart?
Stern.
Stern, okay. All right. All right, Mr. Humphreaville, why don't you come up next?
My name is Jack Humphreaville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. I want to talk about the parking asset restructuring and the presumptive sale of 9,000 of our parking spaces. Leaving aside the issues of transparency, and leaving aside that the city hasn't done any analysis on the impact of the values of the business up in Hollywood and downtown and other areas, I want to focus in on the financial aspects here. It's poor fiscal policy. You don't go sell revenue-producing capital assets to pay operating expenses. As us WASPs would say, you don't sell the silverware to buy the scotch. It's a fire sale. We get $53 million on the sale of these assets. We give up $3.5 billion over the next 50 years. $53.5 billion, and those are the city's consultants' numbers. What are we missing here? $3.5 billion versus 53? That's sort of a number that doesn't work. We don't have any independent financial analysis here. The CAO, I believe, is conflicted. The investment banks that you're hired, they'll give you the advice that it's fair, and just recognizing that they have a contingent fee that has millions of dollars associated with the closing of this transaction. In addition to which, I believe the city is committing securities fraud with regards to the description of the parking deal in their official statement. It's assumed to be a done deal. It is not a done deal. There's the political risk of working with the city, there's a litigation risk, and there's a financial risk. But then again, I could probably say the city's committing fraud all the time when you look at the official statements with regards to the pensions, the infrastructure, the job obligation bonds, and the cops. My advice to you is to stop this process, figure out how we can capture some of that $3.5 billion. Thank you.
I also have cards for Roxanne Stern, Stephen Stan or San?
Steve San.
San, and I have Carol Magnuson.
Yes, and Steve Summers.
Are you Carol?
I'm Carol.
I'm Carol.
Okay, and then Stephen, and then Roxanne. And there's one more person standing up. What's your name?
Stephen Summers.
Stephen Summers?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look for your card, too. All right, why don't we go with Roxanne next, and then Stephen, then Carol, and then we'll find your card by then. Roxanne. Okay, you're in that one. Roxanne. Just so you know, we're separating the P3 from Hollywood Farmer's Market. Right now, we're just doing...
They're Hollywood.
Oh, you're here on P3, too?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
May I help you if I get some new cards and have the people who sign them so I can bring them right to you? So there seems to be some confusion. May I help you with that?
If you want. I mean, it's okay, too, if I, you know, I think people assume that because Mr. Gubler is from Hollywood that he was here for the farmer's market. But that's okay. Yeah. All right, Roxanne.
Roxanne Stern. And everything that has been said already, it'll be said again, but this is bad for the communities that are affected by the garage structure going to P3. It's bad for the businesses near the P3, in P3 buildings. It is really bad for Los Angeles, for all of us. Sacrificing the short-term windfall and to get, let me start again, sacrificing the over $3 billion that we would get in 50 years for the one-time windfall of $53,000. It would be a big, big mistake. Why can't this city learn how to run the garages more efficiently? Perhaps they could learn from an outside source. There's got to be some ways to save, to make it a more efficient operation. But my ruling is, if you take this money now and use it to balance the budget, what are you going to do next year? What are you going to sell? What are you going to lease? Parking meters next and street sanitation? Let's stop this now and have the city take care of its own.
Carol Magnuson.
Thank you. My name is Carol Magnuson. I'm vice president of the Westwood Hills Property Owners Association. Westwood Hills is a community of 609 single-family homes that relies almost entirely on Westwood Village for its primary service area. We shop there, we eat there, we get our services there. Our association opposes the proposal to privatize the Brockston structure. We think also it's a very poor idea overall to sacrifice these assets for the reasons that you've already heard, short-term gain, sacrificing a long-term asset for short-term gain. We don't believe that the Westwood businesses can survive the loss of this parking structure as it is currently operated. A new operator will raise the rates that will really put the people we rely on out of business, and the city will lose tax revenue, the city will lose jobs. It's really a very bad way to go. Thank you.
Stephen San. And Stephen Summers, I found your card.
Thank you very much, honorable council members. My name is Stephen San. I'm the chairman of the Westwood Community Council. I am also the chairman of the Westwood Village Business Association. I'm here speaking on behalf of particularly the business community. It's 11 days before Christmas, and I can tell you, you would have a horde of merchants, property owners, jewelers, restaurateurs that would all be here today, but they're in their shops hopefully generating sales tax revenue for the city of Los Angeles, which is where you want them and where we need them. The idea of giving away, call it a lease, call it a sale, whatever you want to call it, I call it a disaster because the idea of the city giving away these irreplaceable municipal assets is unthinkable. In the Westwood Village community, I want you to understand, please, that it took us 40 years, 40 years, to get that public parking garage built. It was not a gift to us from the city. It was paid for by the customers of Westwood from the millions of dollars of parking meter revenue that our village has contributed to the general fund for decades and decades. The land was bought in 1972 under the leadership of then-city council member Ed Edelman, knowing that we would need the land bank and establish a parking garage. We collected the money under the leadership of Zev Yaroslavsky, and then, in one of the city's many budget crises, Mayor Bradley, God bless him, swept the money out of our 5117 fund. It went to the general fund, never to be seen again. And Councilmember Weesar, I understand they're planning to do that in your district as well with the garage that you need to build to bring back Broadway. It was wrong to do it in Westwood, it would be wrong to do it in your district. It was wrong. And so it took 25 years, not till 1997, did we get that garage built with funds that came from Westwood. The city promotes Shop L.A., it promotes Dine L.A. I'm a restaurateur. My partners and I, we operate the restaurants at the W Hotel in Westwood. How do you expect people to shop L.A. if they cannot park? They will shop in Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, and other cities. I urge you not to do this.
Stephen Summers is our next speaker.
Thank you.
And after Stephen Summers would be Carrie Morrison, Ron Rudecky, and looks like Jimmy Portland. Stephen?
Hi, I'm Stephen Summers, and I'm the elected student representative on the Westwood Neighborhood Council. I am a UCLA student, and I am here to represent the over 35,000 students that currently attend UCLA. Free parking in Westwood is a vital resource to the students. With tuition hikes that have led to tuition going up over 30% in the past two years alone at the university, students are currently pinching pennies. This means that without free parking, many of us will not go into Westwood to assume our daily tasks, whether that be going to CVS, going to the restaurants that are in Westwood, or going shopping in the village. Because of this, this will have a clear trickle-down effect and will affect businesses and workers. The students who are employed at these businesses that are affected will lose many jobs, and this will lead to a downward spiral. This is clearly not an economically viable plan. It's very short-sighted, and businesses, and when Westwood business loses, students share the burden. We are thoroughly opposed to the leasing of the Westwood garages, and we hope that you will utilize your logic to see the huge flaws in this plan. Thank you.
All right, Carrie Morrison, and is it Ron?
Radicki and Jim McPartlin will be after me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Greetings, members of the council. I'm just gonna be very brief. Just wanted to register the concern on behalf of the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance. You know, the revitalization in Hollywood, which has been underway now for about 14 years, we have learned in this economy that it is a fragile recovery. The past two years have really seen a blow dealt to our economy, and what concerns us is that we waited so long to have these public parking assets made available in Hollywood, in particular the Hollywood and Highland Garage, the Arc Light Garage, and a new garage on Vine which is being built. This is the underpinning of neighborhood revitalization. We would like to work with the city council to find ways to utilize these garages in a way that would optimize revenues, including possibly creating a special Hollywood parking district. Please slow this process down. Let's take a breath and look at this as a business-oriented solution that is going to have long-range ramifications. I thank you for your time.
Sir, if you would give your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ron Radicki, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Hollywood Entertainment District. I'm also a property owner, have a commercial building, and been in Hollywood for 32 years. So I've seen Hollywood when it was not so nice, and I've also seen where it's come from and where it is currently. And it is clearly my assessment that this deal will hinder the continued revitalization of Hollywood. And since the average tourist is a middle-class American, that the parking rates that would have to increase would definitely impact the retail sales in Hollywood. Thank you.
Next speaker, if you'd identify yourself for the record.
Certainly. Good morning. My name is Jim McPartlin. I'm the general manager of the W Hollywood Hotel and Residence, which was a $600 million investment into the great city of Los Angeles. This morning, I would just ask you to reconsider or consider carefully what we're doing here. Hollywood's sort of a large ecosystem. We watch out for each other. We're finally seeing the economy starting to come back in Hollywood, and I really am concerned what this could do over the next two or three years. It's been brilliant in the last 15 to see how it has rebounded. So please consider carefully, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Just for the clarification, Mr. Humphreiville, I did call on you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Mr. Reyes, did you want to make a comment on this item, because your name's up on the queue? What's your name, sir?
I'm Radicki. I'm on that same card.
You're on that same card?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Labonge, what's the story here?
Come on up here. Get up here. He filled out a card. If he could just make this quick.
Now, just so you, the city attorney needs to make something clear so you don't, all right. Mr. Attorney, if you could tell them what the rules are on public comment?
Yes, Madam President. This item is not on the agenda, and neither is the Hollywood Farmer's Market item. Members of the public can talk about them in general public comment for the two-minute total period, and council members can only give a brief comment. There cannot be a discussion following public comment on these items.
Mr. Gubler and Mr. Ferantinos, are you here to speak about the Farmer's Market? Okay, I'm about to call those cards.
[inaudible]
All right, so if you use, just so you're clear, if you use your two minutes to talk about P3, that'll be it for today. So that, you understand? Okay, great. So I'll call you back up on P3. Philip Ferantinos, followed by Laurent Gubler on P3.
Hi, my name's Philip Ferantinos. I represent Starline Tours in Hollywood, and we are the leading tour company here in Los Angeles. I just want you to know that when people call us, we get a lot of calls from tourists about thinking coming to Hollywood. One of their first questions is, "How do I park? How much is it gonna cost me?" If this changes with privatization to the ridiculous rates that we could possibly see, you're just gonna see people not coming to Hollywood. It's just not feasible. They'll take those other options. They can go to Santa Monica and park for free for two hours. They can go to Beverly Hills and park free for two hours. Why bother? We've fought for years to extend the number of minutes that people spend in Hollywood. It used to be 20 minutes. Now they spend much more time. They spend their tax dollars there. That's gonna go away. We have people coming up from Anaheim all the time. They ask the same question, "Can we park?" A lot of people coming to LAX take that right-hand turn and stay down in Anaheim. They consider it a luxury to come up to Hollywood. They bother to do it because it's affordable with Hollywood parking. If you change that, they'll just stay in Disneyland, and you won't see any of their tax dollars. So we plead with you, please, let the tourists come. Tourists are not a mass of wealthy people. They're middle-class people. A lot of them are domestic people here from North America, especially California. If you make it unaffordable for them to come to Hollywood and have that experience, I'm sorry, it's your loss, and the money will go elsewhere, either in the state or stay in Orange County, Beverly Hills, or Santa Monica. Thank you.
So, thank you. Mr. Gubler, so this is the item you're gonna speak on?
Yes.
This is the issue you're gonna speak on today? Okay, good.
Hi. Members of the council, Laurent Gubler, president, CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, also here to talk about P3. This is an issue that the chamber is concerned about. As we all know, this proposal includes major garages in Hollywood. That equates to about 2/3 of all the spaces that are being, in this proposal, are in Hollywood, and they anchor two major shopping complexes. The chamber's concern is our ability to remain competitive with other shopping areas. If you lease these out to a private sector operator, it's very likely we may not be as competitive, and we may drive business to other cities. And would like you, as you discuss this in future weeks, to recognize there are other alternatives to this that should be considered. We recognize the major issues are a funding hole for one year and management, perhaps getting better management. Just one possibility would be to consider a slight increase and then taking a loan out against that for future revenues to raise the money to fill the gap. As far as improving the management, we've had a dream in Hollywood for many years of creating a parking district, and we think this may be a perfect catalyst to discuss that, to find a way to let the property owners and the stakeholders manage those garages for the city so that we can standardize rates, so that we can improve administration and marketing of the garages. So we think there's a lot of things that need to be considered as you take this under a future consideration. We hope you'll consider this, and we look forward to working with you to try to find viable solutions for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reyes, did you wish to speak, make a comment on this item, Mr. Reyes?
[inaudible]
Sorry, did you wish to make a comment? Your button is pushed. Is that a mistake? Okay. All right, let's clear his button out then. Okay. Great. So, that's fine. We will go on with the rest of the cards now. Yes.
Water on the cards of the people that spoke on behalf of the issue of these parking lots. I just want to thank them for coming here and sharing that information with us. As we all know, the process is ongoing as a council. No action has been taken, and I appreciate your public comment very much. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge?
Also, I want to thank you, too, especially those from Hollywood, which is very important to have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll call up the next three speakers, Stephen Box, Neil Taylor, and Joseph Omaya. Stephen Box, Neil Taylor, Joseph Omaya.
Stephen Box, thank you very much. I live in Council District 4. I'm running for city council, representing Council District 4. And I'm here today for three reasons. We were upstairs this morning supporting the community gardeners who are responsible for maintaining land on L.A. city property around the city, and there is an issue of the fee increases. So these parks are all different, these community gardens are all different. In fact, one of them supplies food to the Hollywood Farmer's Market. And I'm also here in support of the Hollywood Farmer's Market, which is in a bit of a crisis mode as they find their permit jeopardized by a conflict over access to parking, which brings me to the third reason I'm here today, in support of those folks that just spoke in opposition to the P3 parking asset reallocation plan, if you will. The point here is that they're all connected, and yet individuals are finding that they have to come to City Hall in response to attacks on their ability to improve the quality of life in their community as opposed to finding support in their attempts to improve the quality of life. So from community gardeners, from farmer's markets, and from local merchants who just need affordable parking that's available to the people that shop in their neighborhoods, I'd like you to consider that our ability to manage these assets affects everybody in the neighborhood, the farmer's markets, all the way down to the community gardens. So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to working with you.
Neil Taylor?
My name's Neil Taylor. I'm here about the Hollywood Farmer's Market. I have worked for a farmer in that market. I have helped a friend who's a vendor in that market, and I'm a patron of that market. The market's been there for, I think, 18 years. It's one of the few places of community that I know of in this city. It brings 1,000 people there every Sunday. It's eight hours of time, and it wants to be closed or part of that closed and moved because of excess of parking for a film school. I attended a film school in Hollywood, and I don't understand the ignorance. I think there's something underneath it that I don't understand also. It's gotta be something bigger than closing a parking lot for eight hours on a Sunday in an area that was totally blighted before that farmer's market came into that. That's where the film school was I went to 30 years ago, two blocks away from there. And it was a very blighted area, and it's been improved by the farmer's market, and businesses have come up because of that farmer's market. And now it wants to be moved. So I think you need to think of that as a community core that started the whole, helped with the revitalization of Hollywood. So I'd like for us to put a little thought in that before we move that market and close that market. Thank you.
Joseph Omaya? Is Joseph Omaya, Joseph Omaya? Okay, Mr. Omaya does not appear to be, is Mr. Omaya in the room?
Yeah. Hello. [inaudible] It's still a good morning for everybody. I'm here as an immigrant that I can't...
Would you state your name for the record, sir?
What was that?
Would you give your name for the record?
My name is Joseph Maya, and I work together with my wife in the farmer's market, the Hollywood Farmer's Market.[1786.33] And we've been there for almost a year now. And I'm talking on behalf of everybody in the Hollywood Farmer's Market. And I don't see how can a few hours of our time in there can affect a parking lot of film industry when they have other access where they can go through. The revenue of this Farmer's Market, it gives the city of Los Angeles a hope for everybody in there to work and to have something established. There's a lot of people there that can't on the Farmer's Market and need to work in the Farmer's Market without the Farmer's Market. A lot of people will lose a lot of things, probably their homes and other things. And me myself, I have worked with my wife for that particular year. She's a crafter. She's an artisan. And we depend a lot on that Farmer's Market. And without the Farmer's Market, we will be in a very bad economical situation and a lot of other peoples as well. I don't know what else to say, but I hope they don't close the Farmer's Market.
Thank you. So for the next three folks in the pile, Carrie Morrison and Ron Rudice and Jimmy Partland, they had spoken on the other items. So when their time has been used up, so we leave their names into the record and we'll go to Cheryl Dean. Cheryl Dean? Cheryl Dean? Okay. Ron Kay?
Good day, everybody. This is one example of the kinds of brushfires that are exploding into major issues in the city, all over town. And it's really happening because you haven't faced the budget problem in all this time. And so you pass regulations of full-cost recovery. You open up the possibility of one merchant, one person, stopping a community event. You charge people community events. It's happened. It's inflaming passions all over this town because you won't come to terms. You've listened to the parking controversy. As if $53 million, if that's what it is, is going to solve any of the problems. I mean, you have to sooner rather than later come to terms that you're passing ordinances, you're putting buildings ahead of people. This is a city of 4 million people. It's based on community life. The quality of life in our neighborhoods, the Farmer's Market is wonderful expression all over this town. Boyle Heights got 25,000 to bail it out, 15,000 later today maybe for El Serena. It's just one example of the real vitality in the neighborhoods of this city. And that's where you should be rebuilding the new Los Angeles from by supporting these kinds of things and not worrying about deals with Tim Lewicki to build a stadium that we can't afford. We can't afford it because it's... For no other reason, it symbolically says that luxury hotels and luxury stadiums and luxury facilities are more important than the quality of life of the people of this city. And that's why there's all this conflict happening is you have the power to fix it anytime. You want to come back down into the grassroots and pay attention to the concerns of the people. Thanks very much.
Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Matthew Dowd.
Yeah, Two for Tuesday, a blogging superstar, y'all. In case you just moved to the city and don't know who I am, you must have just moved here. Zuma Dog, living icon, prophetic legend. And I'm here to say to the people... I was going to talk about something else, but for the people that are watching at home, yeah, what's happening is the city's going to have to sell off a lot of valuable asset revenue streams such as the parking garages, then the meters, then whatever else is left. Now here's why. Forget logic. Forget statistics. It comes down to the fact that the mayor blew it. He is personally liable. I don't know if the people watching at home know that if the city goes bankrupt, the mayor is personally held liable. That means he will never allow it to go bankrupt. That means he will fire everybody. He will close every department. He will sell every city asset. He will cling on to prevent prison time. He's liable. So make no mistake about it. There's not going to be any subversion or diversion of the plan to sell this stuff, to sell everything. It's like a meth head crack addict. It's like, "Oh, I better sell my flat-screen TV." "That's okay, I'll just sell more drugs." "Oh, now I better sell my CD collection." "Now my car." "Now everything." "Now I'm on the street." That's what's happening. So make no mistake about it. The plan is on because Antonio's got to do everything to keep his ass off the hook. Now, we will talk. We got some people from LA Clean Sweep here, and I'm taking it upon myself, my Christmas present to the city, since I won a lawsuit tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Time Warner, between 6:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Herb Wesson must be defeated. An awareness-raising campaign. He's head of the Housing Chair. I don't like the REAP. I don't like LA HD. I don't like him being best friends with Antonio. He's a powerful mover and shaker. People don't realize it because he's always out in the back smoking when we're having important discussions. So we're going to start with the TV commercials. Time Warner, TBS, VH1, True Network, and Fox News, baby. Zuma Dog saying vote out Herb Wesson and all the incumbents except Parks.
Matthew Dowd?
Wow, that seemed like the longest two minutes in broadcast history. Ah, boy, I'm like, wow, how did that... So anyway, I want to talk quickly about the public comment speaker cards because there's all this obsolete name and address. But here's the other comment I want to make. You've got at the bottom in red, "Note: This is a public document." And at the top, you got, "Council decorum will be enforced." Now, they're round the wrong way because you want to know it's a public document before you put anything in there. And then when you get to the end of the speaker card, that's when you want to know, "Oh, the decorum will be enforced." So they're round the wrong way. They're all round the wrong way up the top here. I mean, how can you even put that sale together? I mean, you know what? Because you... Okay, let me start again. Merry Christmas. It's holiday time. I don't want to be that guy. I'm trying to, you know, have my New Year resolutions coming early. Let me tell you, my birthday was great this year because I got the injunction from the federal judge. That was like massive. But my Christmas gift is all the parking people, the activism here. I'm so impressed with them because if they even fooled Tom Labange into thinking it was an item on the agenda. He's like, "Oh, let me speak on the item on the agenda." So I wish I could do that. That was so good. And as well to save the Hollywood, the Farmer's Market as well. You know, just the way they got together and making it seem like it's a real issue on the agenda. That's how you do it, even though it didn't work for us a lot of times. But we still put it on the agenda. So anyway, in wrapping up Channel 35, thank you. It's been a great four or five years. I feel like we're near the end. I really... And that's because we've been really productive talks with the city attorney finally.
Thank you very much. Sean Murphy is our next speaker.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Madam President, City Council. I'd like to wish all my fans a happy Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. But I got to tell all my... I got to tell the people the truth. It is not going to be a Happy Christmas and a Happy New Year for those who don't have jobs. If you don't want to hear it, turn the channel. I'm sorry to bring you this bad situation, but I heard that MTA cut the bus lines, nine of them. I'm pissed about that, too. They made a bad choice in cutting the lines. Why? Because we have to pay for their mistakes. MTA, at your next meeting, I hope you reconsider bringing back the bus lines. I'm going to be at your next meeting.
Tenzelzomak is our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council. It's been several years. In 2006, you bulldozed us out of South Central. And now you're going to bulldoze us out of the Hollywood Farmer's Market. And we're starting to take it personally. But really, at the end of the day, you know, the City Council has put... I mean, the city of LA has put this whole food policy group together to tell them that they need more Farmer's Markets, that they need to address all the food desert issues in our communities. And we definitely have been doing that for over 18 years, almost 20 years. And, you know, we feel that it is important that you keep the Farmer's Market open. We... If we don't have the Hollywood Farmer's Market, we can't support the Crenshaw Market, where we are the premier producer of greens and culturally-specific products. We can't support the Watts Farmer's Market because, you know, the community is very small over there as far as purchasing power. And so we feel that you need to support this situation and come out very strong and make sure that the Farmer's Market stays open. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tanaki Moore.
Good morning. It's Tanali Moore. I'm a former consumer of the Farmer's Market in Hollywood. I lived there for a year and a half. And I support keeping the market open for a handful of reasons. One, it's a community staple. All the cities all over LA, Santa Monica, Studio City, Burbank, people in these communities come together to support these markets. And we also live in a city where people are always separated by buildings, by cars. And very rarely, it's these events, Farmer's Markets, community outings, where people can come together for a cause, to support each other, help these farmers with their produce, with helping people eat healthy. And I do hope that if there's any representative here for the film school, they understand that people under... See that they have their own private interests. But if they also remove the Farmer's Market from Hollywood, there's going to be also boycotting of the school as well. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Walter Bectell. And following Walter will be Barbara Kramer. Is Barbara Kramer still here? Okay, following Barbara will be Tanya Kay.
Good morning, still. I wanted to say something you people are talking about. You need to bring revenue into the city. And you understand that if these people don't have a place to park, then they're not going to come to the city and spend their money. Okay, you understand that. You also should understand that if people are stealing intellectual property and copyrighting it from the sources, not just myself, other people, and your prosecutor is being told to not prosecute those people for doing so, what do you think the true sources of that information is going to do if you don't give them any back? They're going to stop producing like they used to do? And it's only so many times people can listen to a song on the radio before they get sick and tired of it and start throwing tomatoes at the performers. This is what we've been hearing on the radio and other places, the same songs. And the new songs that are coming out are not the quality that they used to be because your prosecutor refuses to prosecute people who steal intellectual property and copyright it. I've already given names in the courtrooms to the people involved in my cases. And you go in the back rooms, you laugh about it and how you think you're getting away with it. You're not getting away with anything. Revenue is being cut, and that's the reason for it. And most of the reason Westwood Village is not doing any good is because all the record stores had to close over there in Westwood. Although it's true, if you close down a parking lot, I agree, that will also cut down your revenue. But you need to stop telling your prosecutor to stop prosecuting and start prosecuting. Arrest some of the people I named there. Now we see Bono is association with Alex. Well, that's just a tip of the iceberg. That's just one of the many things that's going on here.
Thank you very much, sir. Barbara Kramer. Following Barbara Kramer is Tanya Kay. Following Tanya, we will go out to the valley for Rick Nightingale.
My name's Barbara Kramer, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Hollywood Farmer's Market. This market is a lifeline for everybody who lives not only in Hollywood but in the surrounding communities in Los Angeles. You're talking about people's welfare, the farmers who put so much love and care into the produce that they bring to the market and the people and the families, the hundreds and hundreds of families that come to this market. I've been living in the community for 12 years. And if I'm in this... If I'm in town, I am there on Sunday, every Sunday. And, you know, our tax dollars are just as important as big business. And, you know, this whole movement towards the big-box industry is really killing the small independent businessperson. And turning your back on what is the mainstay of our community is just... There has to be a crime against this. So you all need to look inside of your souls and come up with the right answer, which is to figure out how you back out of a problem that you put yourself into by allowing the film school to have precedence over what is right for the community. And this is really... I just can't believe that we're standing here today and we're having this discussion. I mean, this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Tanya Kay?
Hi, I'm Tanya Kay. I represent a business owner, a two-time business owner in Hollywood. I choose to operate my businesses and live in Hollywood specifically when it would behoove me to get out of the city and pay less taxes and have more space and have lower rent, specifically because of the Hollywood Farmer's Market and other community things that lie in Hollywood that keep me coming here and proud to be a part of my city. We have a lot of tourists that come through, and I love them. I love the business they generate. Hollywood's really popular internationally. The tourists, they spend a lot of money, but they also get really drunk on the weekends and pee on my sidewalks and start fights and wave their guns around. And the community in Hollywood is the reason that we don't have an empty tourist city. It's what keeps us safe. And the community, the Hollywood Farmer's Market being the mainstay of that, is why people care and keep the tourism from being the bad thing. We're a whole community, and that's why I want to keep my businesses here. Thanks.
Now, two then, eyes for Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. A couple of weeks ago, there was on the editorial, Non-Construktive, regarding bringing jobs or businesses to... Roughly 98 projects worth $2 billion that the city turns around and wants to bring that in. The contractors turn around, have to turn around and have to have 30% of them as LA workers. Well, that sounds the reason that will be. But then they turn around and want to be have 10% disadvantaged workers. Well, I don't know what disadvantaged is, kind of. But then they turn around and want 20% apprentices. Well, we'll say you got 100 workers. Now you add the 10%, and the 20, you got 30%. So 30% of your wage people are there. Now you turn around and have to have a journeyman working with those people. How much production do you think that you're going to get out of a contractor that needs to do work? I'd like you to know... I'd like to know anybody you people ever worked with your hands before. But now you have to add... I was a general contractor before, so I know. You're going to have to add 20 to 30% on your bid to turn around and cover this situation. Because you got... It's called dead man hours of what you're going to have to train. I believe you have to train so many people. But then when you put this type of regulation on something like this, it's crazy that you think that you're going to get something built and not waste money. That there has to be a program to train, but not on the conditions that the contractor has to take somebody that's disadvantaged and train him to turn around and do the job. That's what they make the schools to do, not the contractors to do. That's what an apprenticeship is in all the construction industry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to just tell the public and my colleagues, we have 18 more cards to go. And at two minutes each, and this is all on the Farmer's Market. So for those of you who wish to speak on this in the interest of time and whatever, if you can avoid being repetitive or redundant, that would probably move this along a lot faster. Glenn Bailey, Daisy Part. Is Glenn Bailey here? Glenn? Okay, has Glenn left? All right, so Glenn's not here. All right, then we're going to... Daisy Part. And then following Daisy will be Monique Raymond. Is Monique Raymond here? Okay, Monique, you're after. And then Derek Dressel. Is Derek here? Okay, Derek, you're up. Okay, Daisy Part.
Yeah, it's actually Daisy Park. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here because Hollywood is my home. I was born and raised in LA and have been enjoying the farmers market almost my entire life. I care passionately about the human right to local, organic, healthy food, and the Hollywood Farmers Market is one of the few remaining community activities in Los Angeles from my childhood that hasn't been shut down. Please keep the farmers market alive.
Hi, my name is Monique Raymond. I just wanted to be really brief and say, this is a perfect opportunity for us to keep local money in local hands. The people who shop at the Hollywood Farmers Market, the vendors or Californians were keeping the money in state. This has been, this has been a mainstay for me for the last 18 years. I go to the market almost every Sunday. I plan my Sunday around the market. The Film School knew the market was there when it, when it developed. It knew the parking lot was going to be blocked, so I don't know why they didn't plan accordingly then. I don't understand why this is an issue. Also, as far as the revitalization of Hollywood, the market has created 10,000 people descending upon Hollywood every Sunday. What else could bring that? And these people pay money to the meters, they park in the lots, they frequent the businesses around Hollywood. These people would not be showing up to this area without the market. Thank you.
Derek Dressel, and following Derek will be Arlene Nilson. Is Arlene here? I think Arlene has left the building. Connie Depape Layton?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Lucio Trinidad, is Lucio still here? Okay, great. All right, Mr. Dressel.
Thank you so much. Just like to say, I've heard many things about small businesses and entrepreneurs and trying to support them all, and I've seen no greater gathering of small businesses and entrepreneurs than the Hollywood Farmers Market. It's one of the main attractors of myself as a person who lives in Hollywood. And without it, I don't know if I would really ever actually venture into the center of Hollywood. I'd probably stick to traveling to other parts of town. So, yeah, I don't know. This seems like a really very good, strong thing to help the community, and it seems really silly to, you know, let that go away for the sake of one small parking structure that doesn't seem to be used very much on Sunday, from what I've seen. And, yeah, I don't know, there's other parking structures all around there. I myself park at one of them, spending $5 on a Sunday, typical Sunday. And, yeah, there's plenty of spaces, so, anyway, thank you so much.
Is it Connie? You say, what'd you say her name?
Connie Depape Layton.
Thank you.
This is my second time at a council office since I've been in California from 1984, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hollywood Farmers Markets and the vendors. I've worked for five small family farmers. I worked for CLA, of which was there when we received a lot of funding and support from the city, and I thank you very much. I work for a farmer now, one of the South Central farmers as a volunteer. I travel up to their 185-acre farm in Bakersfield to pack produce to bring into LA to help provide produce to over 3,000 people in Los Angeles of all communities. The Hollywood Farmers Market, it's essential that they stay at the Hollywood Farmers Market so they can continue their programs, so that the city doesn't have to fund them for those programs. The Hollywood Farmers Market, as I see it, is the mothership of all farmers markets in Southern California, in Los Angeles County. If we start allowing businesses to come in to reap the benefits of the revitalization that Pompeius Smith and CLA and former council member Michael Wu did to revitalize the city of Los Angeles, as well as Hollywood, through the development of the Hollywood Farmers Market, we're in big trouble, and so is every other farmers market in the city of Los Angeles. We've got a good thing going. I just have a few facts. I went on the internet, and I found out some information about the Los Angeles Film School. Michael Wu proposed an option for them to cut open a hole in their parking garage that would allow access to that third parking structure. 750 students, is reported, that attend their school per year. They charge those students $37,900 to $42,750 for every 12 months, 12 months to 18 months. That represents between $28 million and $32 million a year. Great for the LA Film School. You would think that they would want to reinvest in their community and the Hollywood Farmers Market.
Thank you, ma'am.
That made it possible for them to be there.
Thank you very much. Lucio Trinidad, Tanise Watkins, is Tanise Watkins still here? Tanise Watkins, Liz Chavez, Liz here, and then Hillary McGregor.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lucio Trinidad. I'm a farmer. I participated in the Hollywood Farmers Market, and as many of the farmers were suffering the economy, and by not having the Hollywood Farmers Market, it could be a big impact for us, try to keep up with all the expenses related to the business, so I will support to keep open the Hollywood Farmers Market. Thanks.
Tanise Watkins.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tanis Watkins, and I have lived near the intersection of Fountain and Gower for the last 10 years. I've been attending or going to the market, not every Sunday, but many Sundays in that 10-year period, and that's why I'm here today. I'm thrilled to hear the comments of support from the councilmen regarding the market, but I'm also appalled that we're here. Me and other people in the neighborhood who regularly attend the market had no idea that this was an issue until about two weeks ago. And so, if it is true that the reason we're here is because the LA Film School would like access to their parking lot, as was previously mentioned, and I don't know if it can be mentioned enough, at the time they became tenants in that building, the market had already been there for nine years, I believe. And so, they knew coming into the tenancy that that was the situation. And so, now, it's a problem. I have no idea why. I also don't own a car by choice. The market is within walking distance to my house. It has been. It's the only market and the closest thing within walking distance, and has been for many years. There's a Trader Joe's there now, but prior to the Trader Joe's, there was no place that you could really go that was close by and by fruit and vegetables and so on, at fairly reasonable prices. And so, if the market were to move someplace else, it would actually impact me a great deal and my neighbors a great deal. It's also a great tourist attraction. When I called my mother, who lives in Texas and visits regularly, to let her know this was going on, she couldn't believe it, and when I told her it was related to the LA Film School and the reason, she was speechless. And so, in some ways, I also represent the tourist, I always bring people that come to visit to the farmers market. It's an attraction, it's a tourist attraction, in addition to being a great benefit to me and to other people who live there. So, I would strongly urge you to reconsider this current situation in favor of keeping the market where it currently is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Chavez, Hillary McGregor, and then Ashley Caldwell, and then Deborah Fairweather.
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Chavez. I'm a South Central farmer. Nice to see all of you again. It's been like five, six years. But just want you to know, we're still here and strong, better than ever. We're still providing local, fresh, organic produce to the surrounding community, not just South Central, Hollywood, Watts, and Ewok, all of these farmers markets. And all the farmers markets are going to be greatly affected if the Hollywood Farmers Market gets moved or anything like that. So, I'm just here to say to all of you, don't make the same mistake again. Please help us maintain this community space open, because it's one of the few things that we have left in LA that is about community, that is not just for profit and gain. So, please help us keep the heart of LA open and, you know, keep providing organic produce to the community, because you all, like, you all go there, I'm pretty sure, all of you take a stroll, like, every other Sunday. There's a farmers market out here, we're vendors here as well, and just as much as we like providing you all with produce, we like providing the rest of the community with produce too. So, if you all have that right, the community has the same right. So, please help us, you know, maintain the Hollywood Farmers Market open. Thank you.
Hillary McGregor.
Good morning, council. My name is Hillary McGregor Fernandez. I'm a resident of Hollywood. I live in Whitley Heights. Councilmember Labange is my councilmember. I'm here to ask you to do everything in your power to save the Hollywood Market. The farmers market brings fresh produce, helps us to eat well, supports our local farmers, and it teaches our children where their food comes from. But more than that, the Hollywood Farmers Market creates community. In a city where it can be hard to get out of the car and connect, the market creates a place, an event, a happening that people are really excited about. Community is a fragile thing. It takes years to create. You cannot put a price on that. The Hollywood Farmers Market is something that LA is doing right. It's something where we are leading not just the city, but the country. Please don't let that be destroyed by backwards 20th century thinking about parking. And I, obviously, there are, obviously, there are many, many people who could not be here this morning, but I just, I've been getting texts all morning from people who wish they could be, but I just want to read one from Margarita Mies, who runs the Edible Schoolyard Program at Larchmont Charter West Hollywood, a school where we serve fresh vegetables from the farmers market to our children every day. She said, "The Hollywood Farmers Market is feeding our children. They are at the, they are the foundation of feeding our city real food. They are the heart of our home, bringing a connection in an often disconnected city. Please save the Hollywood Farmers Market." Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Caldwell, Deborah Fairweather, Jack Beezian, is Jack still here? Okay, and then Alberto Platoa.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Ashley Caldwell. I'm a 13-year resident and enthusiastic 13-year patron of the Hollywood Farmers Market. Hollywood is the Hollywood Farmers Market. Hollywood is the Hollywood Farmers Market. For the 13 years that I've been there and the many years that it was surviving before I moved there, I, when I think of Hollywood, I think of first, the Hollywood Farmers Market. And I certainly hope, sincerely hope, that the few businesses, handful maybe, that feel inconvenienced by the location of the Hollywood Farmers Market, I hope that you can see how the people like me that patronize the market and the surrounding businesses really outweigh those few businesses that are inconvenienced. When I get up every Sunday to go to the market, I bring my bags for the groceries that I buy at the market, but I also bring my wallet with my credit cards for patronizing the businesses around the market. I spend hundreds of dollars every month on those accumulative Sundays at the Urban Outfitters and at the small restaurants and businesses that are owned there, at the Amoeba and at the Arc Light. And I think if the Hollywood Farmers Market were to move, if you look at me as an example of the hundreds and if not thousands of people that go to the market and support the community, not just the farmers, which are wonderful, but also the surrounding community, I think that you can't separate the thriving businesses in Hollywood from the Hollywood Farmers Market. One goes hand in hand with the other. Hollywood has boomed in the 13 years that I've been there. It's completely revitalized, and I believe that because of the Hollywood Farmers Market, this was made possible. The thousands of people that come to this specific location in Hollywood that are able to walk there and take public transit there, there's metro stations there. If you move this market, you will change the community, you will take away from the community one of the essences of the community. Hollywood is the Hollywood Farmers Market. Please don't take that away from us.
Deborah Fairweather. Deborah Fairweather, and then Jack Beezian. Is Deborah Fairweather still present? Okay, I don't see her coming up. Jack Beezian, are you Jack? You're not Jack?
I am.
You are Jack.
My name is Jack Beezian. I've been in business since 1966.
Say them off the board.
We went through riot, and none of you guys or your predecessors helped us. Nobody helped us. I learned how to change my business. I found a restaurant saying, "There's farmers market opening up in Hollywood," and that's how I started Hollywood Farmers Market, and I'm there every Sunday. I haven't missed one day. If you guys don't protect us, I don't know who's going to protect us. There's nothing in Hollywood, there used to be Zordi's, there used to be Broadway, many places we could go and say, "We did such and such in Hollywood." There's nothing other than Hollywood Farmers Markets. If you guys don't protect Hollywood Farmers Market, that's it. You're already in debt, every single one of you. The city's in debt, the state isn't in debt. You don't do anything, it's going to go a lot worse. And I think personally, every one of you should be changed every year, every election time, new people should come in, so we change the city. You cannot keep running the same way. Thank you.
Alberto Platoa.
Good evening, city council members. It's been a while, a couple of years now, so I'm happy to be here again and showing my presence and making sure that our communities get what they want. And we are not asking for the manning that you say, the Hollywood Farmers Market. It's a vital place for food access, and like people have mentioned before, it will be not just affecting that market, it will be affecting markets in Watts, in Crenshaw, in Adwater, and other markets that are in your specific districts as well. So, I want to make sure that these people and our communities are heard, because we need those spaces. And yes, you heard right, we have a 185-acre farm, and we've been supplying lots of organic food to our communities through these farmers markets. So, they're vital, they're vital resource and assets in our community, and it's time that you take it to the next level and start defending the rights of the community, because we need those spaces. And if you're not going to listen to us, we're going to be bringing people down out there and here, and we're going to pack them, and you know we're going to do it. You know we're going to do it. Thank you.
Jack Neffey.
President, members of the city council, it's a privilege to speak to you in support of the Hollywood, Save the Hollywood Farmers Market Coalition. As you can see, a broad base of support has been established very quickly in the face of understanding what the Los Angeles Film School is representing. I believe the issue, just with the recent analysis, more information will come out on this issue, but I believe the Hollywood Film School represents a lot of different business interests, not just the Film School as it says, and that perhaps the issue of the not enough parking on a Sunday, Sunday morning from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM is inadequate, is maybe a canard or a red herring for a larger development plan for the key intersection of Yucca and Hollywood, which has been under a lot of pressure and seen a lot of change into large corporate holdings, chain stores, and not the mom and pop that Jack Beezian mentioned was the staple of Hollywood that I knew growing up. The city council can take the lead on this, they can reject lobbyist overtures that would undoubtedly come after the city council adjourns here and public comment ends. Please continue to listen to the voices of people. I look forward to responding to you further, whatever the outcome. Thank you very much.
Horkid Verlasquez.
Good morning, or good afternoon, council members. I have a quick question, make it very brief. Do you like veggies and fruit or a parking structure? Your choice.
Wayne Spindler.
Well, we have a lot of people that are beginning to come down here to the Marble Tower, the Tower of Babel, and that's, that's bad for you guys, because that makes what you normally do very difficult, because they're going to start looking into all these other things on the agenda. This million dollars, this $6 million, this $400,000, you don't want that. The first thing you got to do today is save that market, because I was on the radio, I was up in Santa Barbara, and I hear on KFI that it's going to be the last farmers market of Hollywood. I'm like, what? You know, Eric R. said he's going to destroy that, you know? He's destroying everything. He's go, over there, Molly's Hamburgers, 1.1 million to shut the hamburger stand down, he's got to have that for his developer friends. He's got to put up- He's got to put up the W with a half 50% vacancy. He's got to put all of these...
If it's about the market, please stay focused on this.
It's about public comment, and isn't this public comment? Yeah, it is.
What'd you say about the market?
Yeah, it's called public comment, okay. So there's another one there, the one that's talking there, he switches his vote away from the people and for the corporate interests. So what you're doing is you're destroying the city. People that own property, people that have money are going to leave, they're going to rent their houses to illegal aliens and 50 people in the house and get their $2,000 a month, and they're going to live somewhere else, and they're going to take their wealth with them. And then the businesses, Raytheon decided, no more. No more LA. I'm not going to, you know, they're saying they're not going to pay, you know, they had a $77 million contract for some crappy computer system that started out to be $2 million. It expired in December, and after that, they're out of here, because they're not going to pay all the city taxes. So start today, save the market, and don't bring all these people here. Thank you.
Madeline Don Wasner, our final speaker for today.
Good afternoon. I'm Madeline Don Warner. I passed through, and I had heard it on the radio and I saw the signs on the street that we need to save the farmer's market. We don't need to eat the produce that comes out of the Big Benz from the ports that are sprayed twice. We can go outside here on Thursday, should be on Tuesday, so we could all go outside right now and eat fresh produce that's so delicious, looks so good, and the vendors make meals that are out of sight, those food to eat in the afternoon. I love going outside to eat that food. It's great, and everyone in this room knows that. They all know that eating on Sunday at that market is fantastic. So I, I don't want to ever lose a farmer's market. I want to support small farmers. It's the most important, Michelle Obama's trying to stop the children from obesity. Fruits and vegetables not sprayed, we need that desperately here in LA. We all want to be healthy. The only way we can be healthy is safe food and safe water. And we don't want tickets, we need parking structures, but we need to work with these problems. We need to be healthy and not with pharmaceuticals, but fresh food and safe water.
Thank you very much. I understand there are some people who want to speak that didn't fill out a card, and we're looking for those cards. And Glenn Bailey, I think you were called, but you weren't here, but now you're here. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Frankel. I'm from Los Angeles. I live in Los Angeles. I love Los Angeles, and I have a beautiful two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, who I like to feed really healthy food to, and I take her every Sunday to the Hollywood farmer's market to buy fresh, local, organic produce. And when I found out that the Hollywood farmer's market was in jeopardy, I started doing some research, and I found out about an ordinance that the City Council passed October 26th of 2009 that changed the street closure permitting procedure for all farmer's markets, not just the Hollywood farmer's markets. I researched the Bureau of Street Services regulations that were promulgated based on that new ordinance, and it seems to me, and nobody told me otherwise, that a developer can buy property neighboring any farmer's market in the city, petition the city to close that farmer's market, and that will be granted. And I just want to bring to your attention this legislative error, this misinterpretation of that ordinance by the Department of Public Works and the Bureau of Street Services that can't have been your legislative intent to put all farmer's markets in immediate jeopardy of development. And if this isn't corrected, it's shameful, and it's inarguable how beneficial farmer's markets are to the city of Los Angeles. Nobody's arguing about that. And to allow any developer to purchase neighboring property and petition the city to close down any farmer's market, that's crazy. It's terrible, and I'm against it, all these people are against it. I don't want to come down here again.
Thank you. We did find your card, it was Ms. Field, and Glenn Bailey.
Good afternoon, council members. Following up on my comments on Friday regarding the Recreation and Parks Department garden plot fee increase, I just wanted to bring to your attention and notice upon further investigation a rather serious matter affecting the department, and that is with regards to the Sepulveda Basin Garden Center. The city of Los Angeles signed a lease with the Department of Army, which owns the facility, lease number DA CW 09-1-67-11 in 1966, which is still in effect, and the lease provides that the amount of any fees to be charged by the lesssee, that's the city, shall be prior approved by the district engineer. The lesssee, that's the city, shall not less than 15 days prior to 30 April and 31 October of each year that this lease remains into effect, submit to the district engineer for approval a list of the fees, rates, and prices proposed for the following six months. They did not do that. The lesssee shall furnish, that's the city, shall furnish for any proposed fee rate or price increase, the district engineer will give written notice to the lesssee of his approval or if objection to any proposed fee rate or price, and will if appropriate state an approved fee right or price each item to which an objection has been made. So the lesssee, the city, the Recreation and Parks failed to comply with the terms of the lease. They are in violation of the lease of the 2,000 acres, because this lease covers not just the garden center, it covers the entire 2,000 acres of the Sepulveda Basin. The Department of Recreation and Parks is in violation of the terms of this lease. So I'm sure we'll find more things, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, and hopefully you'll get Recreation and Parks to follow the contractual obligations that the city of Los Angeles has signed with the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
As I mentioned before, under the Brown Act, the state law, you can only respond briefly because it's not on the agenda, so folks on both sides wouldn't be here, but I can respond briefly, and I wanted to. Just on the last issue, so this doesn't count on my 50 words, I used to actually, I grew up, that was the farmer's market, and I see my dad join us actually here in chambers. We used to farm a plot there alongside the Venturfree Way, so completely support you on that, and I know Mr. Rosendahl's spoken that before. But on the Hollywood farmer's market, thank you for your patience, first of all, for waiting so long and for the two items that had to go before. The farmer's market in Hollywood is not going to close. The farmer's market in Hollywood is not going to leave Hollywood. And the farmer's market in Hollywood also, 100%, I agree with the sentiment and the philosophies of what everybody's put here. I can't go into great detail about it, but I shop there, go there, support it, et cetera. And I haven't just talked the talk, I've walked the walk on it, whether it's $16.5 million to help, and I do prefer people to walk and not drive, but to have a parking structure there to keep it vibrant, whether it's been the expansion of space that we negotiated when there's been development around it, and it's an example of where development helps things. They've been able to have the farmer's kitchen there now, the storage that's gone on there, et cetera. And then the expansion, we now have farmer's markets just in my own district, many of them run by CLA, but not all of them in Hollywood, in Echo Park, where I live, in East Hollywood, a second one in East Hollywood by Barnsdall, in Attwater Village, in Silver Lake, and in Glassell Park. Only historic Filipino town in Mijon Valley don't have... Those are FYI pieces. So lastly, I just want to say in terms of the progress of what's been happening, this is informational, it's not advocating. We have been meeting, I have a meeting on Thursday with the farmer's market folks as well. I am not going to complacently sit by and allow kind of non-elected, let's say, to be in control of this process, because you need that accountability, and you need someone who's going to take charge of this. We've been meeting for months on this, by the way, it hasn't, it's not just because folks are here that we haven't been working on this. I am confident that we'll be able to solve this, and that we will, and I thank you for keeping the heat on and continuing to express that, and I think they're telling me I have to shut up. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn. Ms. Janice Hahn, welcome home.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly, and I'm glad a couple of the speakers said it, first of all, thank you for all of you who shop at the farmer's market, and it's such a part of your life, and social networking, and eating good food, and it's really what we want to do. Thank you for coming down and saying, I'm glad someone spoke to the fact that if we close this farmer's market, it actually has a trickle-down effect to many of the farmer's markets. I was in Watts yesterday, on Monday, and our community in Watts is very concerned about the closing of this farmer's market, and really wants to do everything that we can. I'm going to hopefully rely on Eric Garcetti. I know you're going to solve this problem. I know you are, but I want you to know that I'm here to help you. If we can save the Hollywood sign, we can save the Hollywood farmer's market.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hahn. Save America. God bless you all. Next item, please.
Item number 12, call special for cards, sir.
Number 12? Number 12, we have Zumadog and Matt Dowd. Zumadog, Matt Dowd.
Yes, it's the number one item I've spoken about over the past four and a half years. It's called reap. And when they say reap, they do not mean as in reaping the benefit. No, no. And I'd like to say that to get to the items, first of all, all items on the agenda today must be released from the rent escrow program. I am concerned, and not only am I concerned, it's been discussed in committee and council chambers regarding the LA Housing Department, Roberto Adolfo, Hakam Mordazai, and that whole shady shenanigan crew, and that Herb Wesson is a part of, I wish Herb would pay attention too, because, you know, for a guy who's about to have a wave of TV commercials taken out against him on Time Warner over this issue of rent escrow, he ain't paying attention. So I'm going to double the time by now, we're going to take it through next week also. Because here's the thing, you can't have a housing policy when you got a bunch of corrupt, racketeering criminal thieves that are doing the inspections, and now you want to raise the amount, or you want to have people pay for the inspections. That don't fly with Zumadog. I don't say that you send out inspectors and they get paid by the inspection, well, that just motivates them to keep going out there and doing more inspections, and the people never get off the program, and then they lose the property, and then the people are kicked out in the streets. And I'd like to tell everybody that Herb Wesson, Herb Wesson is the housing chief.
Zumadog, direct your attention to the council member at large, not in particular, not in particular, the council at large, not in particular.
I am addressing the council at large, you big bald buffoon, you're fucking on your...
You're done. You're removed. Sergeant Arms, remove him for his inappropriate language. Zumadog, you are now being removed. 30 days. Ms. Hahn recommends 30-day suspension from the council. 30 days, Mr. Zumadog. Or Mr. Alaka? Zumadog is gone, and Matt Dowd, you have one minute remaining.
Okay, so, thank you, Zumadog, for pointing out the obvious. I think I'm allowed to say that about the rent escrow account program. See, I got you. We got yous. You know, like, this is just milk and cream now, because, you know, we're already legends, we already did it for us. Thank you, Channel 35, so I want to wish everyone happy and safe Christmas time, and I'll be in discussions with Zumadog and try and mallow him out a little so that he doesn't go into those crazy, I mean, I don't know, I mean, how you could possibly let loose with that kind of barrage on a councilman, you know? The one on Herb, that's the one he should have kicked him out for. Anyway, thank you, City Council, Channel 35, Matt Dowd, Zumadog. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Matters be forced. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 13, call special for cards.
Number 13. Zumadog, who's been removed, and Wayne Spindler. Wayne Spindler, are you here? There you are.
Assets, equipment, follow-up. All right, well, so what is this about? It's real simple. When a city or a business is about to go bankrupt, the first thing you do is, is you go into all the cupboards and look in every corner, and you try to find what you can to sell, or what is valued, and that's what you got. You got fixed assets and equipment, because this is the beginning of what the city needs to do. They need to find out how much money, if they sold everything, is it worth? Because this is going to be very important to the bondholders and stakeholders of the city. Because what's going to happen is as soon as the next hiccup happens, then the interested bondholders and the creditors of the city can pull a little magic trick called an involuntary bankruptcy filing. And what this is, is where the city, of course, is bankrupt, and it won't do it, so the creditors and the stakeholders, the bondholders, will place and file to place the city into bankruptcy against its will. Now, what will happen is, is that the city will have to demonstrate that it is not technically bankrupt to get out of that petition, and that's what selling the garages and all of this is all about. The problem is, is that this is only just a small smidgen of the 700, $800 million of debt that needs to be paid, because it's going to be over $1 billion very soon. So what is this really? I mean, fixed assets and equipment, I mean, why waste time with this? The real issue is the pension liabilities and what those are worth, and how many cents on the dollar these holders are going to take, because the bondholders are going to be paid. If the bondholders aren't paid, there's no money, and the city goes belly up anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. This matters be forced, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 17, call special for cards.
We have 25 cards, item number 17, colleagues, 25 cards, and there are not 25 people in chambers, so that's good. So let me ask, who is in chambers that has filled out a card? And we will call on you. If not, we will submit these cards. I don't see anyone here who's filled out a card. If you fill out a card on 25, please come forward. Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler, you filled out a card on 17? You're the only person here to speak on that matter out of 25. That's very good. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yes. Okay, I believe the reason that people filled cards out on this was because it had the word farmer's market on it, and there was a lot of talk about this issue, and here we have funds to assist a farmer's market. And yet Hollywood is getting the direct opposite, they're getting the shaft. So why are we assisting El Serrano Farmer's Market, and why aren't we saving Hollywood Farmer's Market? That's what I don't understand here, is the first thing you need to do is, is the existing problem you have is the largest farmer's market has to be saved, because Janice Hahn pointed out that if it's not, the others are in danger. So even if you spend this $15,000, this El Serrano Farmer's Market, by Janice Hahn's definition, is already in danger. So this should be deferred until the issue with the Hollywood Farmer's Market is resolved. Then, when that's resolved, then spend the money and save this farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you. On that matter, colleagues, number 17 be forced for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 18, call special for cards, sir.
Number 18, Zumadog has been removed, and Stephen Box, Stephen Box, number 18, sir. Mr. Box. That's our only speaker on this matter.
Stephen Box, living council, just before, running for City Council, speaking on the Street Furniture Fund item and the transfer of funds to fund a staff position. If indeed this staff position was to be dedicated specifically to those items that are covered by the Street Furniture Fund, I think it'd be a great thing. But we don't yet have a mechanism for accountability so that the public can participate in the oversight of this particular position and the projects that this particular position would serve. So I think the opportunity is here for us to either reject the proposal, or to enhance it so that we can account for what projects are actually included in this particular staffing position, or what be supported by this particular person. Unfortunately, the way it's worded, it contradicts itself. It refers to a specific position, and at the same time, it refers to all applicable aspects. So thank you for your consideration, but I'd like you to reject this particular motion.
Thank you. That matter is be forced, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 20, call special for cards.
Zumadog, been removed, and... Zuma Dogg been removed, and Matt Dowd not here. On number twenty, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Twenty-four called Special for Cards.
Again, Zuma Dogg not here. Twenty-four, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very well. Mr. Clerk, next item.
That brings us to special number one. I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings. No?
Number one, Mr. Rosendahl is going to speak on special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, for the findings on this, because this is a special item, since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the council offer a reward. What happened was, on Thursday, December second, at nine ten P.M. in the evening, Ms. Razah Sharif, age sixty, was exiting her vehicle on Centinela Avenue, north of Nebraska Avenue in West Los Angeles. In a tragic accident, a passing vehicle hit Ms. Sharif while she exited the vehicle, causing her to sustain fatal injuries. The driver subsequently fled the scene without providing identification or rendering aid. The vehicle, and this is for the record and for the public to know, the vehicle is described as a Toyota Corolla, approximately nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-seven model, with black mirrors. The vehicle is missing the passenger side mirror, and obviously was recovered at the scene. The vehicle is expected to have damage to the front passenger side headlights, and possibly the hood and windshield. So the detectives have asked me to put a fifty thousand dollar reward out there so that we can find the person that did the hit-and-run. So the findings are that, since the agenda was posted, this was brought to my attention. And, Mr. City Attorney, does that help with the findings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can we vote on the findings, Mr. President?
On the findings, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to propose a, the sum of fifty thousand dollars shall be put out there in an effort to find the person that did the hit-and-run.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labons, you have a question?
Yeah, just the clerk.
Mr. Labons, a question?
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Labons. Colleagues, on this matter, special one, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth with on this.
Fourth with.
Thank you.
Everything today is forthwith, Mr. Rosendahl, according to our clerk, along with this item. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting referred.
There is one excuse on the desk. Councilmember Kretz requests to leave at eleven thirty on January fourteen, two thousand and eleven for city business. That meets council policy.
That is approved.
The desk is clear.
Colleagues, announcements. Mr. Labons?
Any motions?
Mr. Labons?
I'll say my announcements for tomorrow.
Pardon me, Mr. Labons?
Oh, Mr. Parks, you want to make your announcement?
Any announcements, Mr. Parks?
What happened at thirty-ninth and, uh...
Mr. Reyes, announcement, Mr. Reyes.
On Saturday.
Hold on, Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just wanted to recognize and thank the Dodgers. To their office, we'll be passing out hams and dinners. All the, I think, goes with a nice festive dinner. We pass out hams to community folks over in Dodger Stadium. Just want to thank them, and again, these are the holiday seasons, and for a lot of folks, these are very trying times. Everything we can do to support, keep those memories for those children is much appreciated. So just want to thank them publicly.
Thank the L.A. Dodgers for their consideration for others during this holiday season. Mr. Parks?
Just want to announce that one of our local school, Crenshaw, won the city championship this last Saturday, thirty-eight to seven, over Carson, our neighbors to the south. So hopefully, they will get consideration to go into the state championship again. We'll keep our fingers crossed, but there's a lot of competition for that selection.
It's a great football game. Mr. Parks and I were able to enjoy that, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for all you do with the Coliseum. And I also wanted to announce on behalf of Councilmember Kretz, Fairfax Lions defeated the Chancellors of Chatsworth on Friday night at East Los Angeles Courts, fifty-one to seven, and it was a great game for Fairfax. And also their marching band won the city title the following day, so let's hear it for Fairfax.
What did Marshall do, Mr. Labons?
They were home studying there.
Very well. It's good for the, for the decathlon, the academic decathlon. Any other announcements, colleagues? Any other announcements? Seeing none? Please stand for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions, colleagues? Please stand in the audience, in the chambers, please stand. Mr. Labons? Mr. Labons, you have a police officer passed away?
Well, Mr. Zion and Mr. Parks, Kent Carter, Los Angeles Police Officer, twenty-nine years. Off duty on Sunday on a leisurely motorcycle ride in Orange County, across the center of Biden, collided tragically with another motorcycle, both fatally injured. He was a much-loved individual who grew up in Los Angeles. He went to Roosevelt High School, later at Los Angeles City College, where he played with one of my brothers, my brother Chris. He was an all-star for the Cubs, and then he was, got a scholarship to play at USC. From USC, he played professional football for the Cardinals when they were in St. Louis. But joining the Los Angeles Police Department, he served a variety of roles, but a tall and built like a specimen from God, if I could say that. Big, I got that, Janice, we're all specimens from God, but what a beautiful man and a beautiful body, much loved by everybody he worked with. The tragic thing in life is, when we go on our ways from our work assignments and come back only to learn that he lost his life in this fatal accident. He survived by his two children, Preston and his daughter Courtney, and also his wife Sharon, also his brother Darrell, who's a retired Los Angeles County Sheriff. He was assigned to LAPD Labor Relations for the last twelve years, and he had numerous great relationships with the building trades and the unions to help on all these issues. He truly was a great individual. When I'd see him around the city, Kent, who was very tall, very broad shoulders, always big smile, and he would fill a room. So I ask for all adjourned in his memory, Kent Carter.
All members, all members. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Anthony Neil DiMaggio, who passed away on November twenty-fifth. He was a lifelong South Bay resident. Anthony was born and raised in San Pedro, and then resided in Rancho Palos Verdes for the last twenty-five years. He graduated from San Pedro High School. Anthony was the president of Star Fisheries, where he had worked since he was seventeen years old. He assumed the helm of Star Fisheries upon the death of his father, Nino, in nineteen eighty-five, and continued to build a thriving business that provided fish throughout the nation to many chain grocery stores and other vendors. Anthony's great love, besides fish, was golf, and he was a second-generation member of the Palos Verdes Golf Club, as well as Spyglass Golf Club in Pebble Beach, and the Olympic Club in San Francisco, California. His other love was Notre Dame. He survived by his wife, Jolene, daughters Melissa and Stephanie, mother Helen, aunts Stella, Anita, Martina, Uncle Tony, and numerous beloved nieces, nephews, and cousins. A funeral mass was held on December third, which I was able to attend.
Adjourned motions? Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Kocorin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the council adjourn in memory of Dr. J. Michael Hagopian. Many of you will remember that in April, we honored Dr. Hagopian. He stood before us, a survivor of the Armenian genocide, one of the last remaining survivors in the world of the Armenian genocide. But Dr. Hagopian was much more than a survivor. He was a humanitarian, a historian, a teller of truth, who spent his lifetime documenting the eyewitness accounts of the genocide. All in all, he filmed, he located, filmed, interviewed over four hundred eyewitness accounts about the Armenian genocide, making, accumulating one of the greatest repositories of evidence anywhere on earth of the facts of the genocide. He was born in Harpert in historic Armenia in nineteen thirteen, the same place that my family immigrated to this country from over a hundred years ago. And he served this country in the U.S. Army Air Corps during World War Two. He got his doctoral degree from Harvard University, and then spent, as I say, an entire career working on documentary films covering a wide variety of areas. But his most notable achievement is the accumulation of this eyewitness testimony, which is now being digitalized and will be permanently stored by the Shoah Foundation at the University of Southern California. So it will be a great contribution to the world in bringing together this testimony in a way that will be accessible to everyone on earth. Dr. Hagopian was an award-winning documentary filmmaker. He was Emmy nominated and made an enormous contribution. But more than that, he was truly a teller of truth and a friend to everyone who cares about justice, who cares about truth. In many ways, his life was representative of the struggle of the Armenian people to survive genocide, to retain his culture in the diaspora, and to insist upon justice at long last. Dr. Hagopian is survived by his wife, Antoinette, his children, James Michael, his daughter, Joanne, son David, and son William, and five grandchildren. Funeral services will be held tomorrow, December fifteenth, at two P.M. in the Samuelson Chapel on the campus of Cal Lutheran University in Thousand Oaks. And the family is asked that, in lieu of flowers, any donations may be made to the Armenian Film Foundation or to the Caneo Valley Historical Society. More information is available at www.armenianfilm.org. Dr. Hagopian was a true friend that I had the pleasure of working with as a board member of the Armenian Film Foundation, and his loss is a loss to the Armenian community, but it's really a loss to everyone who cares about justice and truth.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorin. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Kocorin, for those words. We were so pleased to honor Dr. Hagopian here in council chambers a couple of years ago, and I remember very distinctly the time that he and the Jewish community, I think it was the American Jewish Committee and ANC both co-sponsored an event in Valley Village at a synagogue there. It was, I think, the beginning of where he connected with Steven Spielberg through other members of the community, and was able to now not only see the translation in, I think, ten or twelve different languages of the accounts that he made, but really such an amazing service he's given to humankind, telling those stories. And so thank you, Mr. Kocorin, for your friendship with him, and we're pleased to be able to have had him here in council chambers and to have worked closely with him as well. We've really lost a great man with his passing.
And thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. All members on the adjourned motion. Mr. Labons?
Members, Mr. Garcetti, adjourned with me on this. Marion Givens, who was the founder of Hollywood Heritage, died of failing health at eighty-nine years old. She was a beautiful woman who grew up in Ohio. In the early days of her life, she worked at the Akron plant and making the blimps during the war effort. When she came out to California in the late seventies, she lived in the Hollywood Hills, and together with four other women, created Hollywood Heritage to save Hollywood buildings. The Lasky Barn, which is where the first motion picture was ever made, was saved and then stored on the Paramount lot, then later moved up to Vine Street, and then we moved it to its home right across from the Hollywood Bowl. She had a great personality and was much loved, and she did a great job in restoration of not just the Lasky Barn, but the Waddles Garden and Mansion, and many other things. She was a great woman. I ask we all adjourn. Mr. Garcetti, may I say something for Marion Givens?
Mr. Garcetti?
No, just, I'll join with you and thank you. She was an amazing, Hollywood Heritage has been hit by a couple losses in the last two years of really the founding, with Mr. Nudelman's passing, and now with Ms. Givens as well. But she was an incredible voice to remind us that while Hollywood is always about what's new, that it really, for all of us, is about protecting what's old and that story of building up this town. So thank you, and may she rest in peace.
Mr. Labons, that was all members?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. All members, Mr. Clerk. Adjourned motions, colleagues? See no other adjourned motions? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.